So I'm going to call the meeting of the Planning Commission of Thursday, May 18th, 2023 to order. And the first thing I'm going to do is ask Commissioner Fragoso as to your reason for wanting to attend remotely.
Okay, I have a very upset stomach. I don't feel well. I can attend remotely if the Commission would like me to. Otherwise, if you have a forum, a quorum, I will not attend.
Okay, so in looking at the reasons, it would be a contagious disease.
On that.
Everything's contagious.
I don't know.
Let's call it a contagious illness. And I would move that we accept Commissioner Fragoso's attendance remotely at today's meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that. I'm, I'm, I'll miss you, Norma, but I'm glad you're not sitting next to me.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So with that, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Pfeffer?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Chair Swift?
Yes. Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes?
Well, just before we do that, I just want to announce I, I too am participating remotely from Blue Hill, Maine, because I'm caregiving for my parents. And so just wanted to let everyone know that that's my reason and we have it posted with the agenda. So with that, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Through the chair, before approving the agenda, I was confused. Was there a change to the 20 Willow? Was there another request to postpone?
No, we haven't gotten to that item yet. So we'll hold that off until we get to item one on the agenda. So did we get a vote on the agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I seconded.
Okay. All right. So Fragoso?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Okay, I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission may do so by email, in person, or via Zoom. Presentations will be limited to three minutes, or as otherwise established by the Commission chair. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email, state their view and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at elneil@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. So the consent calendar, we have no items in the consent calendar. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation of a resolution of appreciation to Phil Green, our former Commissioner, who has stepped down from the Commission a couple months ago. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. "A proclamation of the Fairfax Planning Commission of the Town of Fairfax commending Philip Green for his service and contributions to the Town of Fairfax. Whereas Commissioner Philip Green has served the citizens of Fairfax as a member of the Fairfax Planning Commission from October 2nd, 2013 through January 24th, 2023. And whereas Philip Green worked tirelessly and in the best interest of the community and its residents as the Chair of the Planning Commission in 2015 and 2020. And whereas Philip Green has received and acted on planning issues that ran the gamut from fence height variances and encroachment permits to adoption of the Formula Business Ordinance and accessory dwelling unit ordinances, conversion of the Java Hut drive-through coffee stand to a brick-and-mortar permanent drive-through coffee shop, and approval of the Victory Village project, providing 54 affordable housing units for seniors, as well as review and action on revisions to cannabis regulations in many, many private residential projects. Whereas Philip Green also served on the Fairfax Affordable Housing Committee from November 2nd, 2010 to October 2nd, 2013, when he then went to the Planning Commission. Whereas Philip Green has stood unbendingly for the principles of good government, environmental protection, community public safety, and the preservation of Fairfax's small-town character. And whereas Philip Green has stepped down from his position as a Fairfax Planning Commissioner as of January 24th, 2023, to spend more time with family and the increased demands of his law practice. And whereas Philip Green leaves his position as a Planning Commissioner with a heartfelt thanks of his fellow Commissioners and the citizens of Fairfax. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Fairfax thanks Philip Green for his dedicated service to the town and declares that the Town of Fairfax owes him a debt of gratitude because he gave freely of his time to make Fairfax a better place." The foregoing resolution. Well, I'll, I'll hold on that until we have comments and then a vote of the Commission. So would anyone like to make any comments?
We're going to miss him.
Agree with that. Anyone else?
Wishing, I'm wishing him all the best. And oh, look, there's Phil. Great to see you.
Hi.
So with that, I will ask for a vote on the proclamation from the Commission.
Okay, Fragoso?
Absolutely.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. So thank you. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to say at this time? And it's good to see you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve nine years on this Commission. Every single year, we've always had every set of Commissioners be excellent people, giving their time for an excellent cause, the Town of Fairfax. And the thing is, you know, if you live, if you love Fairfax enough to pay the price to live there, you might want to consider joining something like the Planning Commission. It is voluntary, but you have no idea what experience, knowledge, know-how, friendship, and networking you'll develop if you did that. So the current Commission, of course, is full of excellent people, and we always have excellent debates because everybody is so excellent. And everybody of all kinds of walks of life should be Commissioners. We should also hopefully increase the audience. I'd love to see, you know, the crowd so big that they have to turn on the fans every night or something. It's just, would be great to have a room full of people. Thank you all for, thanks for the memories, you know. It's all been good. Also, I want to say one more thing, and that is throughout nine years, nine years of consistency, has been Linda Neal. Linda has always, always been there unless some emergency that she has comes up. And it's very rare. She has the encyclopedia of all knowledge of Fairfax. She is absolutely essential, and she should be getting this award and not me.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. And as far as Linda goes, she only gets this if she were to leave. So we don't want that to happen.
We do not.
And we'll miss you, Phil, and hopefully you'll stay in touch.
Oh, definitely. You'll see me around. Thank you.
So our next item is open time for public expression. This is for matters not on the agenda. So if anyone in the audience here has anything that they would like to comment on that's not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium. Okay.
Hello.
Hello. So can you state your name?
My name's Bob Mellon. I'm at 20 Willow Avenue in Fairfax.
Okay, Mr., Mr. Mellon, this is for items not on the agenda tonight. So when we get to your item, we'll be able to hear from you.
I'll be waiting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in Zoom? Nope. All right, I'm going to close. Open time for public expression, and we're going to go to our first item, which is 20 Willow Avenue and 76 Manor Road, application 2311. Can we have the report, please?
One, one moment.
Oh, Phil has to recuse.
Chair Swift?
That's right. I'm sorry. Hope you brought a book.
Just wanted to note again for the public that I will be recusing myself from this item due to a professional conflict of interest due to the relationship with my employer. Thank you.
Okay, just a quick background. The CPUC has required cable providers to have 72-hour battery backup in case of an emergencies, if PGing the power goes out, so that people can still get emergency notifications to leave their premises or, you know, emergency direction. So it's required by law. And the two sites being considered tonight were originally reviewed by the Planning Commission with five other proposed locations at various areas throughout town at the April 20th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission approved five of them and continued these two sites to tonight's meeting, asking for the following additional information. That Comcast provides site plans for both sites that show the adjacent residential driveway entrances with respect to the proposed cabinet locations. For the 20 Willow Avenue site, they requested that the driveways to the adjacent residences be located on the site plan. For 76 Manor, they asked that the adjacent driveways shown, the driveway across the street be shown in north of the cabinet site on Acacia Road, but actually, the, the site north of the cabinet site fronts on Manor, and it doesn't have a driveway off of Acacia. It just has a fence. So they didn't show that driveway because there isn't one. The Planning Commission also requested that Comcast representatives meet with adjacent property owners where the new cabinets are proposed to discuss possible minor relocations and/or possible screening or landscaping plans that could improve existing or relocated sites for the adjacent neighbors. The Comcast representatives communicated with the owners of 20 Willow, and the email communications with those owners are attached to the staff report for tonight's meeting as attachment B. Emails that were received after the preparation of the packet have been electronically forwarded to the Planning Commission, and copies have been placed in the folder at the front of the Women's Club. Comcast has responded to the concerns of the 20 Willow owners by moving the cabinet so that it will be approximately six feet further to the south from the original proposed location. This results in the cabinet having an approximately 15-foot setback from the 20 Willow Avenue driveway. The relocation improves the visual corridor for residents of 20 Willow Avenue when they exit the residence driveway. At 76 Manor, I don't believe there was anyone that spoke about this from the public. So they did show the nearest driveway, which is across the street and accesses the parking for 88 Scenic Road. The newly plotted information relating to the adjacent driveways and the relocation of the cabinet at 20 Willow Avenue does not change the staff's recommendation on these two applications, and we continue to support the proposals. And we're recommending that you, let me get to the right page. That you approve application 2311 by adopting resolution 202311, setting forth the findings and the conditions for granting the requested encroachment permits for the two Comcast battery backup sites at 20 Willow Avenue and 76 Manor Road, with the additional condition added to the resolution as follows. The cabinet along the 20 Willow Avenue frontage shall not block sightlines for persons exiting the 20 Willow Avenue driveway, and the project must include landscaping or other options to ensure the location is aesthetically pleasing to all involved parties. If agreement cannot be reached between the two parties, the final design of any visual enhancements shall be approved by the Planning Director or the Planning Commission. And that would conclude our report.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one question. Can you point me to where the driveways are shown for 20 and 18 Willow, the two adjacent properties?
Hard to see. So I'm, I think I may have to come up there to show you. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, two.
So see this 15 here? This is showing, see the arrow? This is the driveway. This is the driveway.
No, it's not.
I went out in field.
Yes, this is 24. I got 16, 16 shown, 24 shown, and these two are not shown. That arrow points to the enlarged plan. The 15 goes to the.
Did you see the pictures that I sent?
Yeah, yeah. I said, see the pictures?
Because that was, that was the driveway. The picture had the driveway. And I had the tape, I ran the tape measure.
No, I've seen all that. I especially, I know where it is, but the plans don't show neither the driveway of 18 nor 20. Yeah, that's wrong. Well, at least I cannot find it.
Okay, no. So I guess it wasn't really, Michigan didn't like specify exactly which driveways had to be shown. You just said, show the ones, I mean, do you feel that you told them, show the 18 driveway, 18 Willow driveway? It was kind of left open-ended. So I think they showed the driveways that they think pertain to it. And eight, and the picture shows that the 18 Willow driveway, they have a long section of fence before you get to their driveway. That's, that's why I went out and took the photos, because I know the plans are difficult to read. They're not real easy to read. But, you know, you can also ask for more.
Well, I, it's.
Or, or ask that the, the plan be, you know, if you decide to go forward, you can ask for better plans, or you can continue, right? That's why I said, so that people could actually see in the field where the cabinet is.
Sure. No, no, thank you, Linda. I know, I can read photos. This was about the drawings. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. So the way I understand this, it's the neighbors that across the street who have potentially encroached already onto the sidewalk that have necessitated due to, you know, expense, I think, the decision by Comcast to move the the cabinet across the street, because otherwise, they would have to do a survey to establish, like, where this other neighbor may have already encroached on the, on the sidewalk. And that seems like a lot of effort. I would imagine the people at Willow could potentially choose to pursue a survey to show that their neighbor at 23 had encroached upon the sidewalk. But again, I think that would be unfair to expect them to have to do, do that. And I imagine that for us, because theoretically, I guess it would be the town's responsibility to enforce the illegal encroachment. We usually don't do anything unless somebody's complaining about it, right? And, you know, that, that has ended up, in my view, that approach to enforcing against illegal encroachments in our neighborhoods has led to this sort of unfair result. And I just wanted to see if, if, Linda, you had a thought about that.
I do not. I, you know, the town, the council's been approached several times in the time I've been here to ask them to create a code enforcement department or create a position, and it's, it's just never been done. So so you don't have any staff dedicated to code enforcement, and we respond on a complaint basis, and we enforce violations if they are threatening health and safety. We deal with them immediately. If they're not, they just get tabled until someone has time to deal with them. So we haven't received any code violation complaints on that encroachment. So nothing's done. Everybody has full-time jobs without code enforcement.
Thank you. And then at times, we refer to two side-by-side cabinets, and at times, we refer to the cabinet singular. And I think for both these sites, we have two side-by-side cabinets. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then in the permit, encroachment permit findings, one finding says that the public rights of way are not currently being used for either vehicular or pedestrian travel. And I'm trying to understand why we would say that the sidewalk on Willow is not currently being used for pedestrian travel.
We, we base it on, is there, is there an area wide enough to meet ADA requirements that someone can walk on? And if, even if the cabinet is in that, that, that section of sidewalk is much wider than the sidewalk normally is, right? They've, they've paved a portion that a lot of people will landscape right next to the road. So the area that most people normally walk in and that's normally improved for a sidewalk will still remain open with, even if the cabinet is located there. And you'll know, if, but you can't go out to the site. The neighbor below, you know, the neighbor at 18 has placed big tubs of plants and flowers in the same section of the expanded sidewalk area. So it's being used for other things than the sidewalk, than for people to walk on. And there's still the four feet required by ADA, or 36 inches, whatever it is. Yeah.
It seemed a bit contradictory in the first paragraph saying that the, the whole right of way is not currently being used for pedestrian travel, and then saying that the locations won't obstruct or create safety issues for pedestrian travel. You know, it's just like, well, if there isn't any, then, but.
Well, yeah, if you have a way that you think would modify it to make it better, you, it's, you can totally change it. Yep.
About that. But I just wanted to understand what, what was intended. Also, if we were talking about the fact that the Planning Director, the planning department's approval might be needed for any structural modifications or screening that might be agreed upon, it might still require that departmental approval even if both Comcast and the neighbors agree upon it, right?
If it's, if it's a structure, yeah. If they, if they decide to do some kind of fencing or something, they'd have to come back to the Planning Commission to revise the encroachment permit.
Okay.
Landscaping, not necessarily, because it's not really a structure, but that, that the Planning Director might approve. But if we have a Planning Director, that we don't know that we'll have one, so.
All right. And the language where you're talking about all the involved parties being on board, you're thinking the involved parties are Comcast, the residents, and the residents of the homes around the bureaus, the cabinets?
Though to me, it would be the residents of 18 and 20, because they're the ones whose, the, the cabinet where it's been relocated is going to cross maybe six, four to six inches over in, along the front edge of 18 Willow. But most of the cabinet is in front of 20. So I think it would be good to involve 18 Willow, just to make sure that they're happy with whatever solution comes up, but.
Okay. And when we get to that part, I'll, you know, maybe have some other thoughts that I'll share with folks. But that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question on the plans. So if I look at A zero.
I'm thinking that perhaps your question on.
Well, that, that may be.
Because I will just be honest, that I had to go out in the field so that I could, I could make, figure out the plans, right? And so I tried, that's why I gave you guys the photographs, because the plans aren't, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not drawn the way we're used to seeing driveway approaches, and they're not labeled that way, you know. So it's different than what we're used to seeing. And so I don't, you can try me, but I may just refer you to Comcast, because they're the ones that did the trying.
No, I'll, I'll leave that for the applicants, because I have a question related to A zero and the location of the cabinets in relation to the pull box that is now on this set of plans. And I'll just state what it is, but then we'll ask the applicants, because on A zero, there is a pull box there. And when I went out in the field, there is one box there that I took the measurement of six and a half feet from. So, which put it into a different location. But that's a question that I'll save for the applicant.
Yes, and we have a difference of opinion as to whether it was a pull box or not.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Okay.
All right. That's the only question that I had. Any other questions for staff? Okay, then if the applicants would like to come on up?
Good evening, Chair Swift and Commissioners. Brian Botari, Comcast Government Affairs. With me as always is Billy Glisten, Manager of Construction, back for our encore performance. Appreciate your time again. Linda, appreciate all your work on this. Quicker, I guess, just not to put a finer point on it, but the mandate from the CPC is 72 hours of backup. Doesn't specify battery. That is a requirement that we are currently fulfilling with large diesel generators. So I wanted to remind the Commission of that. We are hoping to move to a more renewable solution with these batteries, and that's why we're here before you today. And I suspect your questions are technical in nature, so we've got Billy here for those. Thank you.
Does anyone, or did you want to, nope. Did any of the Commission have questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. That comes back to the drawings. So this is 20 Willow Avenue. I think the. I think the concerns, we've heard that a lot of them, they, they focus around the distance to the driveway. I can still not from the drawings determine what those distances are. Now, I can make an interpretation. It appears to be that the cabinet is roughly at the property line between twenty and eighteen Willow, which would, is where you would expect a cabinet like that. It's not in front of either of the properties. But what you can't find is the distance to the driveway. So can you, can you allude to that? Both of them, eighteen and twenty Willow.
Can I personally? No, I didn't draft these, so. I'm not the drafter.
So what, what would be according to you, the distance from the side of the cabinet to the edge of the driveway of twenty and eighteen Willow?
You know, I, I apologize, Mr. Commissioner. I cannot speak to foot distance, inches with these drawings. We went based off many conversations we'd had with the, the staff and based on, you know, those positions, we positioned them on the drawing. They're they're very, they're specific, but in general, did we send somebody out with a tape measure to do these drawings? I can certainly tell you, no, we have over two thousand of these sites and we're not sending out those types of resources to be that specific. We're using all the tools available online and those types of mechanisms to do our drafting. So if you're asking me, do I know exactly how many feet from eighteen or twenty on a drawing? I, I cannot speak to that, nor did I usually have to. So that's not any offense or trying to be confrontational. It's just I don't get that deep in the weeds in these types of.
Okay, but, but you are aware that that's.
I've been having several conversations over since the last commission meeting. We've been working well with Linda to try to get them redrafted up to the best of abilities to clarify those questions. And I thought before tonight, we had had done that. So I'm a little perplexed that there's still additional questions.
Well, it's not shown on the drawings.
Again, I thought, again, I thought they were answered and asked and answered, so.
Well, we'll see if we can clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I can make a guesstimate to the eighteen Willow. Eighteen Willow has a whole section of fence along their property frontage. I would say it's at least ten feet for, before their driveway starts. From where the, where the southern edge of the cabinet's gonna be. So their driveway is not right at the cabinet. It's quite a distance away. Which is why I sent those photographs. I tried to, yeah, I guess I didn't get the edge of their driveway in, but.
I think it goes without saying, we're willing to place it anywhere in between those two driveways and able. So at the, at the direction of the commission, just paint an X on the sidewalk and that's where we'll put it.
Yeah, well, we usually don't draw the drawings. You're supposed to do that.
Understood.
So let me ask a quick question related to the drawings again, and you may not be able to answer this one, but on the A zero drawing, one of the new things that's on there that wasn't identified on the drawings from last month was a pull box.
So that was a error in reference. Those are the, those are, it was an error in reference. The drafter put a pull box, should have been referenced to a water main meter. I believe they're all, they're on both sides as I visited the site myself today. The smaller two by two, three by three types of water mains that you folks have here in the town, I believe that's what those are referencing.
So in reference to that, then I went out to the site and I found one of those.
I believe one on the twenty eighteen site. There's a couple on the other.
Right. On the, on the twenty eighteen site, I found one of those.
Correct.
So then, and it goes back to the location of the cabinets on the drawing is I took six and a half feet from that main or, and, and moved it. And that's where I located the cabinets based on this to the right side of one of those planter areas.
Okay.
As you look at twenty and eighteen. So that takes it totally in front of eighteen Willow. So I guess the, you know, the question was similar to Commissioner Janson's is we have the six and a half feet coming from that water utility.
Okay.
Saying that the cabinet is six and a half feet from that, it's a different location. But you're basically saying, so two questions there. The assumption there would be that that would be sufficient length.
If you're asking me if that's sufficient space for me to put the cabinet?
No, I'm, I'm asking if that location on here is sufficient length because it's a little bit further than what Planner Neil was alluding to is to where she thought the cabinet was going to be between right at the property line, if you will, between those two parcels. This moves it a little bit further. My question for you all would be, is that within your length from your appropriate length from?
I'm sorry, now I'm connecting the dots. Yes, that is, that is within our appropriate length for connection to our cabinets for our comms cable that we spoke about last week or last month. If I made that, made that right correction.
Okay.
Maybe I'm not.
Our, and can you, can you remind us what that distance was?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Anywhere within a certain distance of that box, you can put the cabinet.
That's correct. It was seventy-five to a hundred feet.
Seventy-five to a hundred feet.
We've made some improvements since the launch of the project. And we've increased some wire size and some testing, and that's why we've been able to extend it to seventy-five to one hundred feet. So, so that's within, well within the distance.
If I could also just say that Mr. Glisten explained to me today that the, you don't actually need a pull box to run the wires to these cabinets because the pull, the, the wires can be pulled into the cabinet footing directly. So the, the drafts people that did this, you know, they're doing thousands of them, right? And so they put pull box locations in, but you don't actually need a pull box location, correct?
Yeah, we don't need a pull box location and most of those types of boxes are usually utility telecommunications or utility boxes. They're not usually water mains or those types of, so they just got mislabeled in this particular case. But you're correct, Linda, we do not need a pull box because of our pre-pad. The, the sit-on, they have pre-holes for our conduits to come right up underneath and go right up into the cabinet.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Follow-up. I pulled up Google Earth. You said before the cabinet as shown on the drawings would be roughly straddling the property line between eighteen and twenty. Is that correct? That's the idea, right?
No, no, what? It's gonna be, the, the northern edge of the cabinet is gonna be approximately fifteen feet from the southern edge of the twenty Willow driveway. And the cabinets are about four feet, like four feet, five inches wide. So what that does is it, 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 it goes over the dividing line between eighteen and twenty by about four to six inches, but most of it's going to be in front of twenty Willow.
Okay.
But fifteen feet away from twenty Willow's driveway.
Then I have news for you. There is a water meter smack right there in that location. You can't place it there. I can see it here on my screen.
Did, is, is that the picture that I, so did you look at my?
No, this is Google Earth.
Okay, because I ran the tape and are you?
There, there is a water.
Well, I will let.
About, about ten inches away from the property line, right in front of twenty Willow Avenue. So that's the same location where the cabinet is shown on the drawing. But we don't have to solve that now here. I think my conclusion is this, this is incomplete. We are wasting our time. This should be figured out before it's brought here. Well, this is nonsense that we're talking about this. It, it doesn't work. There's no dimensions. We asked for the driveways. It's not there. There's a water meter there, which is something completely different what's shown on the drawing, whereas a pull box, I, we cannot make a judgment on this. It's not possible. It's incomplete. I'm sorry.
So you can, so if the rest of the commissioners are done with their questions, some.
Through the chair.
Could make a motion.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Fergoso.
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant. I too was out on the site. And it was very confusing because the, the reality doesn't match any of the drawings that I was looking at. But my question is on the the opposite side of twenty, twenty is on the east side, right of the street, where you proposed to put the box in front of that long row of hedges. On the opposite side of the street with the existing pole, if you walk on the opposite side of the street towards the corner on Sir Francis Drake, there's another pole and a box of some sort that is off of the sidewalk, back, further back from the sidewalk. And can you tell me what that is for and why that could not be used? That location could not be used to do whatever it is you're proposing to do in front of twenty and eighteen Willow? I don't know the address. I'm sorry. It's probably.
That's okay. It's not, that's not our, our box is why.
That's not your box.
Belongs to another provider, probably AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T box. And you guys can't share locations?
No, we cannot.
That's too bad because there's a lot of space there. If there were sufficient space, could you add a box to that location that was yours?
Anywhere within a hundred feet of where our power supply is, we can place the box.
Okay.
So we've looked at all locations in that perimeter. The most suitable and the fairest, quite frankly, is between twenty and eighteen Willow.
My question was, if you could place a box, is the, you know, the pole I'm referring to towards Sir Francis Drake, and there's a large standing box there. And there seems to be a lot of space that is off of the sidewalk. Could another box be placed there?
I couldn't tell you from memory. I can't tell you. The team has looked at every possible location within a hundred feet of our power supply. And this is the most practical. It might be the only one, the only location that is practical. You could move further up, further down, you're just placing it in front of someone else's house. Potentially having the same issues. You could keep.
Well, not at the one up towards the corner. It's, it's very, it's very different. It's not in the proximity of a driveway. It's set back off the, off the sidewalk.
Could someone, go into Marin map and you can measure the distance. I think it's further than a hundred feet. I think that location you guys are talking about is too far from the power source.
It's the next, the next hole to the south. It's at approximately nine Willow. No, it's south, the one that's hundred thirty-five feet is north.
There are two poles.
But the, okay, but the box is still gonna stay at twenty-three Willow. The, the power source box, because it's not that, maybe you can explain what it would take to relocate the power source to that other pole. Because.
Major construction and engineering and probably pole replacements.
I thought there was, I thought there was a permitting process. You have to go back through the P, the CPC to get permitted to move the box.
And apply to PG&E and make us replace the pole and we'd have to reconfigure the whole network on that street and.
So the, so the box at twenty-three, I believe is more than a hundred feet from that location in front of the nursery that people are talking about. I don't think that's feasible because the power source is further away than that, but.
That's, that's a hundred and thirty-five feet or something. We'd love to. Good, for sure.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
If no other question, do we have any other questions? No? Yeah?
Can I ask a weird question?
Yes.
It's been brought to my attention that there are some communities that have these things put into cabinets that look like natural rocks. Have you guys ever looked into trying to do anything like that? Just say no.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious now, though.
Shall we move on to the public hearing?
No, we're not there yet, Commissioner.
Where are we?
Okay, so I actually was going to ask a very similar question to, to Commissioner Fergoso. Hundred and thirty-five feet doesn't work. Is that what we heard? What's the maximum?
A hundred from the box on the pole. So go down the pole and then, so like eighty feet from the pole.
And there's no engineering solution to amplify that current or such that you could extend that dimension in this case?
No, it actually used to be fifty feet where we've been able to engineer it to a hundred. And that's where we're at.
Okay. Okay. Is there, is there a magic to the dimension that's, the box is proposed to be placed off of the curb? Away from the curb? I think there's a two, two and a half foot gap.
We are going based on usual normal set distances with most jurisdictions, based on the, the specs and the, you know, your guys' permit specs. But again, where we can move those plus and minus to whatever the jurisdiction is and, you know, candidly, that's what we usually do. We do a general proposal on all our drawings, submit them. And then there's some, if there is some red lines or some corrections, then we'll make those corrections. Sometimes they're made out in the field, right at that time with the inspector. And then we'll revise the drawings and submit them as red lines or as, as built. So I understand you guys wanting the specifics, you know, specified details here before that, which I understand. But normally we just do this as a general and then work it out with the jurisdiction. So we're not set to any offset. It's, it's the, it's the jurisdictional offsets that we adhere to.
Great, I get that. So I just want to point out that in this particular location, there is a green strip, both north and south of this location that we're talking about, that's adjacent to the curb. So it seems though that if we were going to let the residents help shrub it up and hide it, we'd want that box more near the curb so that we could make that green strip sort of continuous right at the curb. But that's, that's a detail. I wanted to make sure that there wasn't a technical reason. Do we know what's underneath this proposed location? Do we know that there's not some other utility running under that sidewalk?
No, we haven't done any, what we would normally do locates before we dig and we, we don't do those until we have a permitted situation and then conduct those locates. That's pretty prac, general practice, so.
So you don't need a survey underneath where you're planning to dig?
Not until we are given permission to dig.
That's the way all our construction projects.
That's, yeah, that's.
They call that company that then comes out and marks the.
So that'd be the eight-one-one locate services that are by the state of California. And then we also practice, if we're doing commercial private property, we'll bring in a locate company to do those locates on private property because the eight-one-one does not cover private property, just the public.
So what are you gonna do when we so we come back three more times just to locate it and then you go out there to locate it and you can't locate it where it goes or where you plan to put it?
And we just keep coming back to the drawing board and have that conversation. It's, it's, that's a very unfortunate common thing within some jurisdictions or, or metropolitans. San Jose, San Francisco, Oakland, you know, those heavy, heavy areas where they have multiple utilities. So it's, yeah, I've encountered it in my thirty-plus years doing this, so, yeah.
Okay, I would say adjustments like that are made in the field all the time with, with town staff.
I think that after this is deliberated so many times to come up with a very specific location, an adjustment might not be allowable. Okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna open it up to public comments. Mr. Mellon, so you could speak. Mr. Mellon, so you can speak now?
Mr. Mellon isn't responding.
He may have to unmute himself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Okay, so this is Haley Mellon.
Hi. Thanks, everyone, for your time today. What is our allotted time to speak? Is it 60 seconds, 120, 180? 30 minutes. Okay, thank you. I appreciate the commission's time with this. We purchased the property in 2004 and have very much enjoyed living in Fairfax. I currently reside at the property. However, I made plans to leave town on April 13th for a work trip, which I'm currently on. I work on the creation of new national parks and so at times I'm out of town. However, was in town for the prior three years during COVID. And we would like the proposed five-foot Comcast large battery structure to not be located in front of 20 Willow. There's a number of reasons and concerns. I did have a nice conversation with Mr. Gleason. However, it seems like there's a lot of uncertainty. I was told by him that they had preferred Comcast had preferred for the box to be on the 23 side of the street. And that the town of Fairfax, namely the planning commission, had recommended in front of 20 Willow. So it seems like from listening today that there's some uncertainty there, that Comcast would actually like to place it in front of 20 Willow. As property owners, obviously it's going to be an eyesore and I am not interested in, in paying for the upkeep of landscaping around it. It's also a place where people do come and gather and they talk in the evenings with their dogs. You're right. It is a flat, a flat area of sidewalk. We paid for that sidewalk to be poured and, and it was expensive. And the aim is to have a nice, clean, functionally usable space outside, including for the water main, which is between, exactly between the two properties of 20 and 18, smack dab in the middle. Your commissioner was correct there. We also put our garbage cans there, but most importantly, it provides for me line of sight. Because as you know, that, that street is very, very swift with traffic going to Sir Francis Drake. So from the different positions between the water main and the sidewalk that I have zoned out and practiced line of sight, I would not be able to see oncoming cars. So that's my number one concern. Second concern is property value. It's obviously going to change the property value. And frankly, if, you know, it's going to be on display. The neighbors driving up and down the street where there's a ton of neighbors are going to be looking at this box every day. It's just not going to be attractive. But in general, I am concerned about the, the lack of coordination here. And I'm requesting that other locations be considered. In particular, in front of, you know, closer down to the nursery down the block, more on the same side of the street as Comcast says they initially wanted. Thank you very much for your time. I know this is a complicated issue and I appreciate everyone's thought process.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on Zoom? Okay, Mr. Mellon? You can unmute yourself, Mr. Mellon?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Thank you. I didn't, I didn't get Brian's last name. I'm sorry. What is that?
Who's?
From Comcast. Brian from Comcast?
Otterini? Did I have it correct, Brian? Is that close? What is it? Botari? Okay, Botari.
Botari, thank you.
Sorry, Brian.
Did, did the commission get my letter? That described.
The one I emailed, the one I emailed you that I sent to them at 7:21 this morning? That one?
Yes, yeah.
Commissioners, you got that correct?
We have received your correspondence.
Okay, well, good, good to know. Thank you for that. I just have a question for Comcast, which is what is a power box that's up on the pole? What's its function? How does it work? And why can't it be moved? Hello?
Comcast just explained that there's a whole permitting process involved with, that you have to go through PG&E and you have to get a new license from the CPUC to, to put up a new box on the power poles.
Yeah, I heard that. I heard that. I heard that. I just wanted to know.
That's why they're not, that's why they're not doing it.
So there, is there an answer to my question? What is a power box? What's inside of it? How does it work?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So I guess you have to get up here. You guys need to come back up here.
I mean, it's a reasonable question, I think.
Yeah, they're going to answer.
Good.
Thank you, sir. So I won't pull up the big PowerPoint from last meeting, but essentially the signal in our network is pushed along copper wire by a low-level electrical current. And so the power boxes are essentially there to push the current along so that it can get into the coax wire in your home.
And other than the paperwork, is there any logistical reason that that box can't be moved to another pole?
Mr. Mellon, I think if you just provide your comments, I know you provided some of those questions in your correspondence. But this is really isn't a Q and A for the applicant at this point?
Oh, I thought it was open. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, then I do have some other comments, which is what I heard is reference to more than one cabinet, side by side, I think was the term. Is, I don't, that's news to me. I didn't know there would be side by side cabinets. Regarding encroachment across the street of this, of that sidewalk at 20, in front of 23 and 19 Willow, that is my neighbor and friend's essentially lawn and retaining wall. And I have no intention of making that a problem. So, you know, it's a reality. Fairfax is filled with encroachments and I, I wouldn't ask that that be moved or, and I certainly don't intend to complain about it. A comment was made earlier that the neighbors are on board with the planning. And that's not true. I know. I know the neighbors at 20 Willow are not on board with what's being done. As far as these drawings, I think the problems with them are a symptom of the fact that no one made a physical visit to the site. And this was all done, as I mentioned in my letter, I encountered the surveyor that was working on this months ago. And, and that didn't go that well, but I do want to confirm that yes, there is a water meter where discussion earlier tonight suggested that the, that the cabinet goes in front of 20 Willow. And the main reason I called in is to thank the commission for listening to my, or reading my letters and considering the, the arguments or the, what I'm presenting that, that should be considered in making a final decision. And so I trust the kind of a lot of respect for the commission and so I trust them on what they're going to decide on this. But I do agree that I worked for Pacific Bell for five years in the planning department and they didn't have thousands of locations where they needed to do work. They had tens of thousands. And the comment that because there's a volume of installations is a reason not to have an accurate plan. I'm not used to that.
Okay, Mr. Mellon, can you try and wrap it up?
I'm done. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you. Whoops. Any other comments on Zoom? Okay, then I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners, anyone want to speak first?
I have a comment through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fergoso.
Thank you. Just one thing I wanted to mention, when I was out there today looking around, it's interesting that the east side of the street is the one that has the sidewalks all the way for blocks and blocks, whereas the opposite side of the street was developed in such a way that the cars park just directly in front of the building or pull up onto the sidewalk to park, which is very common in Fairfax. But I noticed it because I was trying to walk along the street to check out the pole and you can't walk on the west side of the street because there is basically no sidewalk. And when there is a bit of sidewalk, the cars have to park there because it's such a narrow street that you have to pull over to let a car go through. And so it just seems to me very unfortunate that everything would have to go on the only walkable side of the street. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from fellow commissioners?
Yes, thank you. So I'm just going to sum up my thoughts. First of all, I completely agree with Commissioner Jensen that we don't have the capability to really evaluate this because we don't have documentation that we asked.
We've got an echo. We got the reverberation. That was really funny.
Okay, sorry. We're not hearing it in the room. Okay, so anyway, so we don't have the ability to evaluate. We ask you for some specific things to be able to evaluate it while we're sitting here and we, we can't because you didn't provide it. So it's all sort of a moot point to me tonight. I am going to just highlight the comments that I made before that if by chance this cabinet location was acceptable, which we can't tell, it does seem like we should consider a move towards the curb so that it could be set within the green zone on that street. I think that also it, it's silly to not get a survey before we make a decision on this, to confirm that the decision is even, again, possible. So I'm just going to leave that there. I did, Linda, I was able to get on the, the Marin maps and that, those pole locations are about 125 feet apart, both north and south of that pole that is existing. I'd actually like to see some, an engineering explanation. First of all, why you can't put the box more than 100 feet away? I want, I want to see that documentation, please, before we hear again. So if we could get that.
Can I just clarify? So why they can't put the cabinet more than 100 feet for the power box?
Because I do believe that location at nine Willow would be almost a no-brainer of this whole strip of road. Geez, there's a good spot that there is another ugly cabinet already there. So I want to actually see some written documentation of why that's not possible. So that it's on the record. And I also want to have it on the record. I want to see written documentation of what it will take to move the power supply to that southern pole. And so I want, I want to see it on, you know, I want a formal document that tells me, oh yeah, it would take a three-year process for us to move this power, this power source. So I'm sure that's all stuff, you're a big company. I'm sure you could email one of your colleagues and have all that stuff tonight. But we need to see that before you come back. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Jensen?
We did not really talk about the other location. I mean, I concur with Commissioner Kelly. I mean, that was obvious. We did not really talk about the Acacia Road location.
That's true. And I think initially, probably the best thing to do would be to look at these individually.
To you. I mean, it was, it's, I, I think that I don't know if you agree. It's pretty easy to modify the resolution if you want to go forward with this, the 76 location. You just remove all references to 20 Willow, but.
I mean, there will be, I think I, on the.
You should talk about it because it's on the agenda.
But I think the best thing to do is to talk about each location separately. So I'd rather just kind of address the Willow first and then go to the, the other one, if that's okay with everyone.
Oh, sure. Yeah. No, I just was noting, I think, I, to me, we're done with 20 Willow. I mean, I, I know that we need to move that forwards. We can't make a decision tonight.
Okay, so.
My take on it, but.
Okay, so my take on it, and I think we'll probably have to have some kind of.
Could I just, sorry to interrupt, but could I just get some clarification from you because I don't want the applicants to go away and not. So when you look at page LS1 for 20 Willow, that was prepared by a surveyor. And it's, it sounds like everybody went out to the site. So you can see, I mean, they're not labeled as such, but you can see the driveway for 20. You can see the wood wall, the little, the little bubbles are like the little rock wall in front of 18 Willow and they do show the driveway. So how, how would you want them to modify this survey? And, and I guess you want the surveyor to plot the proposed location on, on his survey is what I think I'm hearing you say. That would work for you guys and then label the driveways and, I mean, they're shown on there. So label which one is 20 and which one is 18. Could you be specific so that, you know, I, I wrote a letter of action giving them as much information as I thought I, I thought I, you know, made it clear what you guys wanted, but obviously there was a breakdown in communication. So I really want to, or would you rather add that in your motion? Do you want to be specific in your motion? But I'm asking you to be very specific so that we don't have to come back.
Well, let me, before we do that, let me go ahead and throw my comments in here and then we can discuss how we want to address this and probably ask the other two commissioners. You know, because it sounds like there is some discussion of asking for a continuance, but I want to ask the other two commissioners after I make my comments on this to see if that's kind of the consensus of the group. So from my perspective, I think the concern has been voiced that there's a desire by the residents, the parcel owner at 20 Willow, not to have this in front of 20 Willow. We haven't heard from residents at 18 Willow. There is room, when I brought up the question of the water meter box and that on that A zero drawing, it was, the cabinet was located six and a half feet from that water main box. If, and which would put it totally in front of 18 Willow. So there's, and I asked the question of putting it between those two planter locations would be within the 100 feet plus or minus. 100 feet plus or minus circle that they needed to be next to that power source on that pole. And that seemed to be a yes. When I went out there and looked at the site by the nursery and I looked at that pole that was there, that pole has a lot more attached to it. When you bring it up, there's a lot of wires on that already. And then the the underground piece and then the cabinet that is there to the left of the pole that would look abandoned, wouldn't be the same size that cabinet as to what I think Comcast requires for theirs. So there's a potential there. We don't know that. You know, would that pole be feasible with all the wires on it already and the connections to even move a power source? What that process is? And would those cabinets have to be pulled out and would there be even any room there to put Comcast cabinet? I personally am fine with having this since the concern from the resident is having this in front of 20 Willow. Having it moved between those two planter locations, which takes it even further from the driveway at 20 Willow. Haley Mellon had said that she was concerned about the line of sight from the driveway to that water box. But again, this would take it beyond that, but in front of the way I looked at it in front of 18 Willow. As opposed to even splitting the 18 Willow, 20 Willow line. So I would be comfortable with that going forward. But again, I want to hear from the other two commissioners on their concerns with this and how they felt about wanting to continue this item for at least the Willow location.
Well, I'll jump in. I I have a hard time understanding where the driveways for 18 and 20 are based on the drawings. I really appreciate all the photos and the measuring tape and I definitely agree that it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to be so specific about a location when they might have to move it if they go out there and do a survey and there's, you know, a water main right where we tell them to put this. It just doesn't make any sense. I tend to agree that moving it in front of 18 Willow seems like a convenient solution. I think we did hear last month, very clear explanation of what would be involved in moving to a different pole and moving the whole kit and caboodle to a different pole. But I don't have any problem with asking the applicant to come back again. And this time actually, you know, have a better sense of where exactly the cabinets would go. I don't think, you know, we need to have you know, happy neighbors in every location. But I do think that there is just so much uncertainty here that it doesn't really make sense to me for us to make a decision over.
Through the chairs. No other comments. Thank you, Cindy. Just one thing that comes to mind, and I, I don't need an answer now because they, there probably isn't one available. But I'm wondering, can we get any information about the service area for this pole and this box? Would it cover this block? Will it cover a particular quadrant of, you know, will it, is it going to cover 10 blocks around the pole and box? Is it just the street? Are these going in every five miles, every 10 miles? I would just find that very interesting if we could get any of that information. And, and I also would be happy to continue this one Willow Avenue situation and approve the other one, which to me did not appear to be problematic. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, so let me go back to the commission then, and we're only speaking about the Willow Avenue. Should I take a vote on whether we want to bring it back? And then ask for the specifics we would be asking for?
Maybe you should ask the applicant if they're willing to come back again on that one. Before we move to do.
Well, let me first see if I get a consensus from the commission.
Because we're already 30, 60. Yeah. So we can continue it for one more month if they agree, you know? We have 90 days.
So Commissioner Jansen, do you feel you want to have this continued?
Yeah, I think it's, as a matter of form, we should not be trying to design this. It should be clear on the drawings. And, and it's not, and everybody has trouble with it in different forms, and that's just not right. So I believe we need to continue it. And I think it's, you know, I, I know where it's, if it has to be that close to a pole, I know where it's going to go. But it's not my role to do that. Just so, and therefore I think they should come back.
Yeah, I go everything that Commissioner Jensen just said. I, I shouldn't be sitting here Google street viewing it and looking on the Marin maps for you guys to tell me where the poles are and where we're evaluating. It should all be on these papers for us to evaluate, and it's not there yet.
Yep, Commissioner Fregoso?
I, I would agree with both my commissioners. We need more information. We're kind of wasting our time right now on this one particular Willow location. And I think the applicants have heard a number of questions that we have. So yes, I would like to continue it.
Okay, so assuming I can get specific information from the commissioners as to what they want to see coming back, can I ask the applicant if you are willing to continue this to next month?
So I think the reason maybe some of the commissioners are having trouble with this is that our location is flexible. We are not trying to build a home. We have a hundred foot radius. We can put these boxes. And as such, the reason these have been most successful working it out in the field with staff is because these kinds of issues can be trouble shot in real time. If we come back with a very specific location on drawings and you'd like it six feet one way or six feet of the other way, then we're coming back again the next month and the next month. There's an amount of certainty, I think, that you're looking for that we cannot provide because we are flexible. We're telling you the general location we'd like it to be. I would ask that you would empower staff to work with us in the field with your direction to find a location that is suitable to all parties and we would agree to that. Absent that, quite frankly, I, I don't know if we're going to get where we need to be on the site at Planning Commission. So I would ask you to consider empowering staff.
So are you asking for a decision tonight? You don't want a continuance?
Yes.
Yeah, because then you can appeal if you, you know, yeah.
Well, and then, so my question for staff is would staff be willing, considering that we had the possibility is to move it to 18 Willow? Perhaps between those two planter areas, would staff be willing in that general area to work with the applicant to define a location?
I think the Public Works Director and the Building Official would be, would be very willing to work with them to try to work something out. And I I don't even want to tell you what I found when I went back through resolutions. I went back way back, like 15 years in resolutions. And I found a resolution passed by the council that seemed to consider having that be the process for these things. But they never went back and changed the code that says you have to approve the encroachment permits. So the town attorney said a resolution cannot eliminate a town ordinance. Whatever they did back then, they didn't do it properly. They set up the, the exact parameters and they put it in the hands of the, the Public Works Director. But they didn't go through and repeal this section of the code that requires you to approve the encroachment permit. So I think they were trying to work towards what you're talking about, right? But it never got finalized in the appropriate manner.
So then my question to, my question to my fellow commissioners would be, would you be accepting of that approach that we look at the 18 Willow site? Because we know that we have residents that don't want it in front of 20 Willow. Would you be accepting of, and there's flexibility there with that 18 Willow? Would you be willing to have staff work with the applicant to define a location for this?
Yeah, I can respond to that. I think the, it's possible to formulate what needs to happen. And, and that's not necessarily based on concerns of 20 Willow. But it, there's logic to where it would need to go if it has to go that close to the pole. The only, and so we could do that. The only question I have, if we do that, does that satisfy that the public has been able to review this? Because then it's going to happen. I'm not, I'm unclear about that.
If you make, if you make a decision that you're willing to specify, you know, that you're approving, approving a location to be determined by the Public Works Director and the Building Official in conjunction with the owners of 18 and 20 Willow, somewhere along the frontages between those properties. And somebody has a problem with it, they have the right to appeal within 10 days that decision to the town council.
Okay.
And I think what I will do just to make sure I'll send a copy of the letter of action, if, if that is what happens, right? If that's how the vote comes out, I'll make sure a letter of action gets sent to the owner. And if there's a tenant at 18, we'll make sure that they get a copy of it too, along with the 20 Willow Avenue neighborhood. I'll try to get it out the day after so that they know the full 10 days they have to appeal. Now, there is a fee to appeal, you know, it's not free, but.
And they won't necessarily know where the cabinets are going to be within that 10 day period.
So I, so you could say, you could say, I might need to add, talk to the town attorney if there's a way to just say the decision of the Public Works Director and the Building Official, 10 days from that day, they could appeal it. You know what I mean? You can work that into your resolution. That the location will be determined and the, the appeal can occur 10 days from the decision of the Public Works Director and the.
Well, then our resolution is overall trying to peruse the town code provision that has the 10 days from the decision and the date of the resolution, which we just discussed.
Well, well, but okay, so let's think about this. If you send it, if you set a general location and then, and either neighbor is not happy with it, with the fact that it's going to be somewhere along their properties and they don't know where it's going to be, they can appeal that decision.
Right, right. I think, I think if you, if you wanted Cindy to specify 18, that that would certainly put 20 on notice that we were looking at 18. And it would certainly put 18 on notice that we were looking at 18.
Through the chair. If I may, thank you. Just one, just one other question. I don't have a problem with having staff, Public Works, Building Inspector Directors to, to take a look at that. My question though, is that the only pole on the entire street? I go back to the service area. Is that the only pole? We have no understanding of the service area that is being provided. Could there be a pole on the opposite end of the street? That might be a better location that serves the same purpose. So we're kind of operating blindly here.
Well, no, because what was explained is that there was quite a process and permits that had to be obtained from both PG&E and the CPUC to put the box on the pole that it's on. Okay, so it's already there. The power source is already in a fixed location. There are other power poles, but to relocate the box is quite a process. You have to, you know, it's not like you just ask PG&E and they say, sure, go ahead. You know, it's like you have to apply, there's permits to be approved. I think Cindy made a, a good point that the one that everyone's focusing on in front of the, next to the nursery, it has a lot, I mean, a lot of lines and stuff coming from it. I don't know if you could get a box above like where the public could reach it, you know? Because there's so many power lines, there's so many lines going to it.
So the key, Commissioner Fregoso, is that the pole that's in discussion already has the Comcast power source on the pole along with a battery that doesn't back, that doesn't provide the backup power that is now required by the CPUC. So that pole already has Comcast.
And it's the only one on that block that would serve that block then?
That has a power source on it for Comcast right now? Yes.
And I think it's more than a block. I think it's that whole hillside area, all the Comcast users in that area, because am I correct? Otherwise you'd be applying, otherwise they, there'd be other boxes, other power sources already up in that Willow Avenue neighborhood.
I don't know.
Serving that whole hill.
Then that's the only spot that's could serve the entire hill? That's my question.
Yes.
So, so when they put the boxes in originally, right? They had, they had like engineers that figured out the best location for the box and that box has been there for how many years?
At least 30.
At least 30 years. That box has been providing the service to Comcast for that neighborhood. So it's not that simple to just go ahead and move that box somewhere. It was chosen for that location because it was the most, it was the optimum location when they put it in 30 years ago.
Okay, so if that box does not go in, then that entire area would get no backup battery service.
Correct.
But the alternative is that if there's ever a disaster, you pull one of those trailers out there and put it on the sidewalk that everybody wants to keep open or in the street. And it sits there during the emergency and then it's pulled out again. So fire season, you know, when there's, when they're turning the power off and stuff. Yeah. If we don't have a battery, if they don't have a battery backup, which they're required to have, if they don't have a way to back it up in a fixed cabinet location, they're pulling one of those trailers out there and it's sitting there. That's the alternative. Uh-oh, I don't have my mic on. Did everyone hear that?
Yes, I heard you.
And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Nope, you nailed it.
I want to make a practical proposal here. So the, you know, of course, nobody wants those boxes, but we need them. There's a couple of concerns. One of the bigger concerns is how far is it away from the driveways, which is important for both 20 and 18? And then it can sit on the water meters. So just very simply, if you place the box centered between the two water meters of 20 and 18, and you center it in what is supposed to be the planting zone on the sidewalk, both ways, then it would be, have an equal distance to both driveways, approximately 20 feet. So that would be the location that you. So that would be the location that you would indicate. That's not what's shown on the plan, um, but that's where it would end up. Yeah, no, oh, I can draw it myself. I, it's, it, you know, it, yeah, go ahead. Sure. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's in the drawings. Yeah.
Survey actually shows the water meters.
Yeah.
That's what those little W's are. So you're talking about right in here.
Yeah, that's right. That's why I put it. Okay, right, there you go. Then, then it straddles, basically the west side of the box straddles the property line between the two properties. So you, so you, you could center it between the water meters and center it in, in the, in the other axis, center it in the hypothetical planting zone. So I would be okay with saying like, okay, that's where it needs to end up. If it cannot be placed at another pole, and that is, I think, what we hear. I, I don't know how that is, how that plays out uh, formally, but, um, I presume we could make that work in some way. Um, but I do want to note that I am very disappointed that we are guessing about all this and it's not shown in the plans. I mean, it is what it is, but, uh, that's not good. So I'd be okay with an instruction like that and then have staff figure it out with the planning director.
It would be the Public Works Director and the Building Official.
Public, yeah.
Would everyone else be okay with that approach to this?
I think that the public needs to be told where this box is gonna go and have a chance to comment on it, um, other than just us deciding here in this meeting.
So Linda, when you do this, when town staff does this with the applicant and goes out and identifies a location, let's say in front hypothetically of eighteen Willow, how will you then, what's the process then to contact eighteen Willow?
So I, I don't, you know, this is kind of new because this is a new requirement, but I'm, I mean, you can specify to, in your resolution that the, it's the Public Works Director and the Building Official. You could say that once they've made their decision, they shall, you know, advise eighteen, the owners, the owners and the tenants of eighteen and twenty Willow of the location. I mean, they could spray paint it on the sidewalk. It'll be very clear where it is and give them a certain number of days to either express, you know, concerns, make recommendations for changes, you know what I mean? I mean, there's gonna be a negotiation between those. They're not gonna, uh, the Building Official and the Public Works Director are gonna work with Comcast and the adjacent owners to figure out how it's gonna, exactly where it's gonna go. I mean, if there's gonna be screening, you know what I mean? So it's gonna be between the two water meters and it's gonna be in the, in the, you specify that it's between the two water meters and it's in the planting strip area, leaving the, leaving the required, uh, clearance for ADA.
Well, I'm.
But that, but that leaves some room to shift it back and forth. There's space between the two water heaters. It's not, the, the water meters are more than four feet apart. The cabinet is like four feet, five inches. So there's a little bit of room to, you know, wiggle, there's wiggle room.
So I would ask that, you know, based on the discussion tonight, that we have the Public Works Director and the Building Inspector go out with Comcast and determine the location, knowing that we have concerns from twenty Willow and then have them identify what they think is an appropriate location for this.
Yeah, and I mean.
And then address that to the.
To the commission?
To, address that to the, identify that to the two property owners.
Yeah, so you guys, you guys can make any motion you want. You know, if people are uncomfortable with this, you don't have to make it. You still have another month, you have ninety days. Right? Once, once you, once we've determined that it's complete, we have ninety days to act on it. So I, I think that, I think that based on what Comcast has said, that specifying a general location and letting Public Works and Building go out and work with the owners and Comcast is probably the best way. And if people aren't satisfied, right? Then it'll come back to you, right?
I'm comfortable with that approach.
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand, Linda. Could you explain that? And so if we put this thing in the reso that says that Comcast and Public Works and and who else?
Uh, just Comcast, Public Works and the Building Official.
And the Building Official are gonna figure out where it goes.
Well, no, you're gonna specify that it's gonna go between the two water meters in front of eighteen and, eighteen and twenty Willow Avenue, and it's gonna be as close to the curb as it can be, right? And they're gonna agree upon a final location with all those people satisfied, right? And any, and any screening, right? And if they can't reach agreement, then they have to choose some other location completely, and then they're gonna have to come back to you because there's no decision for anything but that general location between the two water meters, right? If, if eighteen Willow comes out and says, we don't want it in front of our house either, and we're gonna, you know, we're not.
How do we, uh, postpone this another thirty days without the consent of the applicant who was just saying to us that they would prefer to appeal this to the council if we.
That's right. That's what they've said. They don't want to have to come back, so you have to make.
I don't understand why you're saying that we have ninety days if, if they.
Oh, that's if they agreed to it, you know, you know, the, when, when someone, when someone, when you, when the commission continues something, we can't continue it by law more than ninety days. And I'm just saying that you continued it at your last meeting, so you still have another thirty days, if you want to continue it.
They've already told.
They won't agree to it, right? If they won't agree to it, then you make your decision.
Table, right? It's off the table if they won't agree to it.
That's right.
Okay. I just needed to understand because what we're talking about now is what we do moving forward from here, not.
Right.
Not in a world where suddenly the applicant is gonna change their mind about wanting absolute.
Yeah, so I think the other commissioners were try, commissioners were throwing out ideas for a way me, a way that maybe you could make a decision tonight, right? That's what, so there's, there's three alternatives. There's three alternatives.
As, as I see it, that you're gonna have to be able to give the residents, uh, you know, a real opportunity to be heard. Now frankly, I think we've given the people at eighteen Willow an opportunity to be heard because this has been out there and, you know, they haven't come here. Uh, maybe it's because it's been discussed as being in front of twenty Willow, but still, you know, you would think that they would be paying attention and, and a- a- and if they read this, uh, report, know that, uh, there's some question about eighteen versus twenty. So I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like because the applicant is telling us that they uh, want to appeal this, uh, the whole question of getting it to come back again uh, seems moot. And really what you need to do is be definitive enough that, uh, the applicant or the people at twenty Willow or the people at eighteen Willow have enough information to know that they better appeal our decision in the next ten days. And so frankly, I don't know, I'd probably be inclined, I know Cindy, you've been trying to figure out a way where we could just let the, uh, Public Works and the Building Official, uh, make the definitive decision, and that's certainly in line with the language that, uh, staff had proposed for the resolution about, you know, the final design, uh, of the visual enhancements would be decided by the planning director or the planning commission. I think you could do something along those same lines and say, the final decision as to the location shall be confirmed by the Building Official and the Public Works, but I don't think you can do that and give the neighbors any certainty. And for that reason, I think I would recommend we deny the application so that the applicant could appeal it to the council. Because if they're not willing to, uh, you know, postpone for another month to see if we can try and figure this out, then I think, you know.
So here's where we go. I thought on that. The applicant has flexibility as to where this goes um, for all these locations. And what they have said for other jurisdictions is they work with town staff to determine where these cabinets go. Hearing that, I think the approach of stating that that's gonna be the case in a resolution to put this, um, for the Building Official and Public Works to go out with the applicant to determine a final location in that area would be the solution.
And under that theory, if I lived at either twenty or eighteen Willow and was concerned about the cabinets winding up in front of my home, I would, uh, at that point, want to consider the appeal myself. So what you're doing is saying, okay, let's agree to the location of this unit because, I don't know. And then put the onus on the residents of twenty and eighteen to appeal it as opposed to the onus on Comcast to appeal it. And frankly, I just would rather put the onus on Comcast.
But we do. I know, but so, so can I just throw something out? But the problem is the location is being determined by the pole and the box. You know what I'm saying? And so to me, it seems like there's only limited places. They either put it across the street or they, or they try to deal with the, the neighbor on the other side and get him to pull, you know, go through the whole process to get him to pull out a part of his front yard, right? And put it over there, which could take, you know, court cases.
Right, well, that's why it would make a lot more sense to agree to a one month continuance again, as opposed to saying, no, I want a decision tonight and I'm flexible, when we don't necessarily have, you know, are we gonna put it in front of twenty, or are we gonna put it in front of eighteen Willow? I just think the question mark there is significant if you're living there.
With the, so I thi, go ahead.
Would the commission consider asking the applicants, now that they've heard this discussion, whether they would be, whether they would change their mind about agreeing to a month continuance?
Well, yes, I'm not clear on what that continuance would do. We've got a situation where we have a general area in front of twenty, in front of eighteen. We have a situ- that we're all comfortable with in relation to other options that we know we have concerns from twenty Willow. We haven't heard from eighteen Willow, as Commissioner Newton said. If we were to identif- put in the resolution that the final determination of where this would go, because there is flexibility there, would be town staff and the app.
But you have a commissioner who's saying that's putting it on the adjacent property owners to, to file an appeal. You know what I'm saying?
Could I, could I also, uh, point out that during this month, what exactly you're talking about giving direction in the reso to do could occur? So that when they bring it back at the, you know, for the June meeting, we have that, you know, here's what Building Official and Public Works think is the right spot. And at least we can give notice to the neighborhood about what that spot is now gonna be. And we would probably put a lot more deference into it once our Building Official and Public Works had said, yeah, that's the spot it needs to go in. You know, it might be exactly where Commissioner Jansen has predicted. But, you know, at that point, we would have something more definitive and the neighborhood would have something definitive. And when we approved it, wherever it was, whoever was unhappy, that would know that, oh, I better figure out if I'm gonna file an appeal.
I'd like, I'd like, just like to point out, um, Mimi, I agree with everything you just said. Commissioner Newton, um, if this was a house, we'd ask you to do all this stuff before you come talk to us. You, we'd like to talk to you, get an agreement with your neighbors, get your neighbors to come in and support the project. And then it'd be a slam dunk. Talk to the staff, tell us where you're gonna put it, so we can make a judgment on it. Right? If this was a house, that's what we would do. I don't understand, just because we're talking about a really, really ugly electrical box, it's some different process.
So let me ask the question again. Would you be willing, hearing this, to another thirty day continuance? And during that process, you and town staff go out and identify a location for the box? And then we come back, as Commissioner Newton said, with that information at the next meeting.
How large is this radius that you're, you've kind of zeroed in on here? Just to give me an idea of the, does that make, that question make sense? You've got it between eighteen and twenty, in between the water meters, planter box, like how big of a, how big of a wiggle room space is that, that we're talking here?
So from between the two water meters. They have to provide. I'll show you, I'll show you, sorry, on your survey.
Well, no, I'm just, we're not talking about a large area, right? So to Chair Swift's point, what exactly are we coming back for if the commission says a pretty specific area? What, I mean, help me out. What, what difference does it make if it's on one side of that eight foot radius versus the other side of the eight foot radius?
I, I can answer that for you.
Okay.
It's procedural. Um, the problem is that the information currently doesn't show exactly what's gonna happen, so the public doesn't have that in front of them. So if that's decided now, then the onus would be on the public to protest that instead of the other way around. So it's a procedural mess. That's where it comes from.
Understood. But if the commission resolves tonight to, for us to put it within an eight foot radius, wouldn't the public then be noticed that a box will go in this eight foot radius?
Not the public. We send it, we send, we send a letter of action generally to the parties that are affected. This is a little bit different. Normally, our letter of action goes to an applicant who has proposed a project, right? So, you know, there's a little bit of a judgment call there. I, I think I would send my letter of action to eighteen and twenty, but where do you, where do you, you know, where do you determine how far it should go? Like, maybe it should go to everybody within three hundred feet, right? I, you know, where do you draw the line? It's, it's a little bit of a gray area because it's the public right of way that can be used for the benefit of the public, right? It's not private property. I mean, we have an easement over it for public improvements, for the benefit of the public.
And, and I think this is for the benefit of the public, given the purpose behind why you guys want to do this and, uh, underlying need for emergency, you know, connectivity. And, and frankly, I think that this is a lot more simple than, you know, the, the question of the, you know, encroachment. It's more, is it in front of eighteen Willow? Is it in front of twenty Willow? Is it straddling the two? And I would agree that given where the water meter is, I don't think straddling the two is gonna be the answer. Uh, I think it's either gonna be in front of eighteen or it's gonna be in front of twenty. And I think if you live at eighteen or twenty, that's gonna make a big difference. I don't know if, if the people at twenty are really gonna care as much if this big ugly box goes in front of eighteen. Two boxes. So, so that's why, you know, it, from my perspective, it would be, uh, you know, it would be a better shot at getting the box location approved if we at least knew where it's going to be. And you guys said you're flexible, but at some point you kind of have to fish your cup of bait and say, here's where it's going to be. And so we would like to know where is it going to be? Because I just want to know if 18 or 20 are going to be the ones that are unhappy with any approval of this location.
So what are you saying, Mimi? Are you saying then that we ask the applicants to reconsider if they want to continue? And then during that time, they go out with staff and determine a location?
Which they can spray paint on sidewalk, which will alert anyone walking by to the proposed location.
Yeah, we don't want story polls.
We could even, you know, we could have them, yeah, anyway, they could post it. We could post the notice in the field too, before the next meeting, and then anyone walking by would know that that's where it's going. I don't know.
So going back to you all, do you want to reconsider that continuance or?
You'd work with the public works director and the building official, and I think we could let those neighbors know and, you know, see if you could get some kind of.
I think the commission can do all that and not, it's May 18th. Okay, fire season is right around the corner. I think the commission can instruct staff to do all of the things you're talking about without coming back in 30 days. And we all, I, let's be frank, we heard from the Melons. I don't think they're going to change their opinion depending on whether it's four feet one way or the other. So we're probably going to end up in front of council anyway. I prefer we do that before fire season, if at all possible. So that's, that's our position.
So no to the continuance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then I would go back to the thought of having the applicant and staff go out and identify a location for this. Because we're looking at, the app, the applicant has said, there's flexibility there. I think it would make sense to have town staff go out and make it less flexible and identify where this will go. Because I think they're going to be doing this at some point at a permit process anyway with staff, correct? Okay, so we might as well do that now and then assuming that once they get out there and they do their 811 and all that, and they find out that they've got a clear path, it's going to go there. If not, then they're going to have to adjust with staff at that point in time anyway.
Yeah, I would not.
Yeah, so can I, I just wanted to look up the appeal thing just to make sure because it does say that any decision of a staff person can also be appealed. So you could take action and the, you know, the public works and building official would choose a location. They could spray paint it on the sidewalk and, and people could be advised, you have 10 days to appeal this because they can appeal the decision of the building official and the public works director.
I mean, I think that's the, you know, considering that we're looking, you know, at upcoming fire season, which because of the rains, we haven't had like prior years already. That this is a public good. We want to get these in here. So we have the backup. The applicant does not want to just do a continuance. So then we would either approve it or deny it. And if they appealed to the council, then, you know, we're still talking about the same thing of a flexible location for where this is going to go. And you're still going to be at that spot where they're going to probably work with staff to determine where that is. I mean, I think if we just have that happen now, working with staff to determine, as you said, a location, mark it out, put a notice up. And then we go from there.
All right. In light of the fact that the building official and the public works uh, decision as to the specific location may be appealed by, uh, affected parties. I could probably go along with what Cindy is suggesting. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
Commissioner Jansen?
Yeah, no, I think based knowing where that pole is, we sort of know where it needs to go. I think that's okay. We, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm thinking about. What my, the biggest concern is just that the public has time to, to interfere in this process. And I hear that that's possible. I mean, that's the procedural hiccup here. So I think if we, if we illustrate where we believe it needs to go, like we discussed with the as currently in the reso, uh, what, uh, for staff to make that final decision where it needs to go. And that's clearly indicated, then I think we could proceed that way. I would support that.
Commissioner Fregoso?
I would agree to that if someone makes a motion.
Commissioner Newton, would you agree to that concept?
Yeah, um, I would have some other tweaks for the reso. So if, uh, Commissioner Kelly's on board, uh, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I, I'm not on board. I, I don't think that, um, there's been sort of the due process that the town counts on for this sort of thing. This, sure, this box is for the public good. I'm looking at the documents that were submitted to us for evaluation and I can't tell you that I can agree with them. We're waving our hands and saying now that it's something else. Um, I don't, I don't think the process is, uh, fair to the public. I, and I want to point out that I don't think the public should have to pay to appeal this also. The onus shouldn't be on them.
Yeah, there is another, there is another process that sometimes gets used because the, if, um, in similar situations, the people that are aggrieved of the decision have approached council members and can often get council members to do what's called a directed referral. And it's basically the appeal process, but a council member calls the item up and it doesn't cost anything for anybody. You know, if a council member agrees that your concern is noteworthy or whatever, they can do a directed referral, which doesn't cost anything. The council doesn't pay to do a directed referral. So there is an alternative to the appeal process, but it rely, you, you know, you have to rely on a council member to agree with you that it's an issue that should be brought up in front of the entire council. Just, I wasn't sure if everyone was aware that there, we, we're one of the only communities that has that directed referral process.
Okay, um, it seems like we've got a majority of the commission that supports that approach. And you all, if you want, can sit down.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, but we also have another location that we haven't addressed yet. So do we want to address that now? And then based on that, because you've got one resolution addressing both of them. So should we address then the manor location now and talk about that and then wrap them all together?
Try to, yep. Make an attempt to wrap them together.
Okay. So does anyone have questions for staff on the manor one? Or did we address that at the beginning? And if not, um, do we want to have a discussion? Do we need to have public comment on the manor one or separate or?
Oh, I think you do. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure that it was clear to the public that they could talk about both of them when you first opened the public hearing. So I would make that, yeah.
So if there's no questions for staff on the manor application, is there anything from the applicant that you want to address related to manor or, okay? So any questions for the applicant, um, on the manor application?
I think, uh, if my memory serves me, we discussed the possibility of losing public parking by adding this box in this location. I think we, um, asked for survey information across the street so we could evaluate that, which it looks like we have. And I think we talked about, uh, the necessity of adding, uh, bollards in this location to protect the box. I don't see any bollards on the plans. Um, I don't see an analysis of whether or not we are losing. Uh, it looks to me like one of four parking spots on that street. So 25% of the parking goes away now that we add the box. But I can't really evaluate that either from the drawings that we received. So I guess the question to the applicant is, was there any evaluate, evaluation of whether a parking spot would in fact be, um, used? And whether there's then intention to protect the box with bollards?
Uh, candidly, I don't remember the first question, um, about evaluating for parking. I know we talked about positioning the cabinets. Um, so we're flexible and, you know, augmenting how they sit. Um, but I don't remember us having to be required to speak to that. So, um, I, maybe that was missed in the communication.
So the bollard recommendation was made by the building official. He, he was concerned that because people park so close to where the cabinet was proposed. Do you know how far from the cabinet ball? I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that yes, a space is going to go away because the cabinet's four feet, six inches. The bollards are like, I don't know, six feet away. You know, again, it's, it's the commission needs to evaluate, you know, the loss of one, a public space that people have been relying on. They can provide parking on their own property and the greater good that the box is going to provide to the, you know, I mean, it's what we have, it's what you guys have to grapple with when people want to build new parking spaces that are going to take the public space away, but it's going to create, you know, a private parking space or maybe two spaces. You know what I mean? It's it's, someone's always going to give something up.
Through the chair. If I may, through the chair. Is my.
Did you have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I, I thought, uh, everyone else was done. Since we have a number of unanswered questions that can't be answered by looking at the plans and we're already sending them probably to talk to staff about the other issues on Willow, then let's lump them both together and send both of these to staff and have them review the parking situation on, uh, one and the location, uh, on the other and have them come back with specific information on both sites.
Staff would have a problem with that because you're trying to put, you're putting, you're giving staff the, the, uh, the task of trying to decide if a public parking space, someone's been having that, they've been taking advantage of parking in the public right of way in a place that isn't like, you know, it's available for parking, but it's not formally designated parking, right? What's more important? That's the job that's supposed to be being made by the planning commission with the encroachment permit.
I see.
Right?
Commissioner Jansen?
Um, yeah, I, I looked at that as well. I think what you're saying, Lenise, uh, interesting because the, the, the box is pushed closer to the corner there and the width of that strip of land is only five foot, six inches. So it is not a parking space. Your vehicle would be partially on the public, on the street. Um, now it might be used. Of course you can, if you need to park your car, you'll try anything, but, um, it, it is not a parking space. It never was, it never can be. Um, so if, and then if you go a little further in, uh, Acacia Road, it widens up and then it becomes. So considering that the location of the box as shown is from a parking standpoint, probably the best location you could pick because it's the narrowest strip of land you got there. Anyway, that might two cents there. So I, I, after that thought, I, in my brain, in my mind, the parking problems sort of, um, didn't seem so important anymore.
Staff question on, um, on that location. So the applicant has said that that cabinet can go perpendicular to the roadway. So I don't know how much space that saves from it being parallel. And then with the bollards, it may not make any difference, but that would provide a little bit more room for parking. It may still take out one parking space though, but that is an option to make that perpendicular and perhaps save a foot or two.
Well, but I, but I'm just talking, I'm talking, I'm thinking out loud right here. Um, but the, but, but the box is four feet, some inches wide. And when you turn, if it's, it is very narrow there where they're trying to put it. If you turn it sideways, it's going to be right up against the neighbor's fence and right up against the road. And I don't know that you're going to be able to put a bollard on that one side. You know what I mean? I'm not sure the bollard protection is going to be able to be continued around the box that way.
So when we look at, this goes back kind of to the other approach, but when we look at where staff is going to look at putting bollards and staff has determined that they want bollards at that location, could they also then assess whether it could be perpendicular or needed to be parallel?
You guys, you guys can, you guys can direct, you guys could craft your resolution any way you want, right? I, I have been working here for a long time and I have a different opinion about the use of the public right of way. Right? For, to me, it's for the greater good of the public. And so I, this, this trying to save like one potential spot when you've got emergency battery backup, it, to me, I'm having a hard time with that. I think that people find places to put their cars and when people have a hard enough time finding parking, they find ways to create the parking on their property. These lots are, a lot of them are flat. They don't even have to build parking structures to get parking in on their property. So I mean, I, I, you can, you can, you can craft your resolution any way you want to craft it, right?
Thank you.
The building official is the one that said that there needed to be bollards and and he said, did he even, he, he said this one and the one on Cascade. Yeah. So those were the only ones he was concerned about.
I mean, if that's, you know, I don't think going perpendicular is going to save you a full parking space.
No, it's not because, because the cabinets only.
Right.
And the.
But it just may add a little bit more room there, but you're still losing a parking space. But I just, okay. Um, any other questions for the applicant before I open this one up to public comment? Okay. Is there anyone in the room that would like to provide public comment on cabinets being located at 76 Manor? Okay. Seeing none, are there any on Zoom? Right. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think there's really a better place for this particular cabinet. I just wanted to make sure that the parking was at least talked about in this forum. And it sounds like we don't even need to add a condition for bollards that that's already taken care of by staff.
I, the building official asked, didn't I put it in the resolution? Because he put it as a comment, as a recommended condition in his comments. So we included in the resolution. Yeah.
Okay. So now I get to the hard part. We've got one resolution. Up, go ahead.
I'll, I'll take a stab. Initially, one of the things that confused me about this whole thing was the plural and singular and the uses of the plural and singular of the word cabinet. Because we've got these dual cabinets that are referred to as a cabinet throughout. So one of the things I want to do is instead of referring to the two cabinets at 20 Willow and 76 Manor is refer to the two sets or the two pairs of cabinets. Because it just got really confusing and seemed to be contradictory when we're dealing with these pairs of cabinets. So I would like the references to be corrected in the resolution such that we are talking about a pair of cabinets at Willow and a pair of cabinets on Manor slash Acacia. I would like to also go under the language that you had recommended adding, Linda. Which is the condition number four. And indicate that the pair of cabinets along the 20 Willow Avenue frontage shall be determined by the building official and public works director in consultation with the applicant. And with the guidance from the planning commission as to be located between the two water meters in front of 20 Willow and 18 Willow and as close to the curb as possible. And that upon a decision as to the final location of the pair of cabinets, the residents of 20 Willow and 18 Willow would be advised of that decision and their rights to appeal it. And after that decision had been made, the applicant must also include landscaping and or other options to ensure the location is aesthetically pleasing to both the neighbors at 20 Willow and 18 Willow. Or if agreement cannot be reached as to that landscaping or other options by those neighbors, the final design of those enhancements would be approved by the planning director or the public works director. And with those changes, I would then move to approve resolution number 2023-11, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2311 for two revocable encroachment permits granted to Comcast for power outage emergency backup battery cabinets located agreed within the public rights of way of the town of Fairfax adjacent to the following addresses, 20 Willow Avenue and 76 Manor Road.
I would second that if I make, may make a friendly amendment. At five times in the document, it is stated that is along 20 Willow Avenue. I would make that 18-20 Willow Avenue. It happens five times in the text throughout.
And the title?
And including the title, correct. Yeah.
Okay, I'll accept that.
And then I have a question on that. If you could go back, I know when we talked about improvements to the cabinets, whether it's some kind of vegetation or some kind of fencing lattice, that if we had fencing lattice, that is a structure that would have to go, correct?
Well, I think it's going to depend on how they do it, right? So like if they attach some kind of a lattice, like right to the cabinet, I wouldn't necessarily consider that a separate structure. But if there's space between the cabinet and wherever they're trying to put some kind of screening up, I think it would have to come back to you.
Well, my proposal was to actually leave that final decision up to the planning director or the public works director. And I thought if we put it in the resolution to that effect, that we need not have it come back to us.
Yeah. And I think, I think if the planning, yes, I agree with that. Because if the planning director in public works doesn't feel that it's some kind of a separate thing that has to come back, then there, then, then it doesn't have to come back.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, I will call the roll. Fregoso?
Yes.
Kelly?
Nay.
Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes and we have it, do we have an appeal? We have a regular 10 day appeal
Yep.
process on this decision. And information on that can be gleaned from planning department.
Actually, it's the clerk.
The clerk.
The town clerk, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And if anybody wants, we could take a five minute break and I can go find our other commissioner. If Commissioners Fregoso and Newton are back, we can start.
I've been here.
Okay. We're gonna continue with the meeting. Item two is 54 and 56 Bolinas Road, application 2313. Can we have the staff report, please?
The project encompasses repainting the existing facade of the building at 5456 Bolinas Road white while retaining the existing black trim. The proposed color palette of a white facade with black trim depicted in the color elevation received April 5th, 2023 demonstrates that the exterior paint color changes shall create a well-composed design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the Bolinas Road commercial setting. The building west of the project site is painted a dark gray, while the building to the east has a red brick facade on the lower half and a white with greenish, white with a greenish tint color on its front above the recessed entry doors. The proposed color palette includes sufficient variety and is different enough from the neighboring building color palettes to maintain the individual character of the 5456 Bolinas Road commercial building. And we're recommending that you approve application 2313 by adopting resolution 202311, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And I just wanted to call your attention to, I hope I added that condition. Maybe I forgot it. Yeah. One of the reasons the applicants have indicated that they want the color change is that they have clients that are having difficulty finding their locations. And so neither of the, neither of the businesses have the, the, the building address on the front of the building. And so staff included a condition that they put the numbers and the addresses on the front of the building along with painting it. And that would conclude our report.
Any questions for staff?
One question, you referenced resolution 202311. I believe that should be 10.
Yes, you are correct.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Is there, usually we have like standards for minimum size letters and numbers and have like some language about illumination? Is there a reason why we didn't include that type of?
For the numbering?
Yeah.
Because they, that they weren't proposing it. That's a condition. And there are, there are like, you know, acceptable standards set forth by fire and stuff for illumination. I'm not sure why these buildings don't have addresses. Everybody else has addresses along the street.
Well, so why wouldn't we want to include those minimum standards that we include? I mean, they could make them bigger. They can light them more. But if we had the minimum that we usually include in our resolutions about.
So I don't have the fire department here and I don't know what they are. So if you could, if you could just include a condition to make you more comfortable, that it be a size that's acceptable to the other agencies with lighting and stuff, that would be better because otherwise you'd have to continue it.
Okay.
And, and this was a condition that I added kind of, you know, later in the game, when I went out right before, when I was writing the staff report, I realized that they didn't have addresses. And that might be part of the problem that people aren't, are having locating them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff and it relates to the address on the building. And it wasn't clear to me and, and I thought I saw somewhere in here that it could be painted on. And it said the address including the number. So I took that to mean that potentially painted on 54 Bolinas would be 54 Bolinas somewhere. But there was no, like from a design review or anything else, there wasn't anything specified as to what that was going to be. So if you could clarify what you were looking for.
That says you have to have the, the, the street name after the number. And pretty much the commercial buildings just kind of do what they want, right? And so I don't even know if, I mean, if you guys feel strongly about it, that they should have Bolinas, I would just leave it up to them. I mean, we don't really get involved in dictating.
No, but what I thought in going through here was that it had either the staff, the staff report or one part of it had said that it was going to have the address including the number, which to me brought up the question of whether it would be like 54 Bolinas painted or printed on there, but I could be wrong.
No, no, the condition reads like this, both 54 and 56 Bolinas Road shall fix the street addresses, including the numbers to the building, some, to the building somewhere on the frontages of their respective commercial spaces in a size that will be readily visible from Bolinas Road. Because I think part of the problem they're having with people not finding them is that there's no numbers.
Right, but the way that's written, it says the address including the number. So to me, I took that to read and we can change that. I took that to read, it was.
I would just take the including the numbers. I mean,
All right.
Because what I'm looking for is the numbers, some, 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 some businesses on Balinas Road, they just have the number above the door, right? And that clues people in, you know, if they're looking for a hair salon and they are driving by and they can't read the sign fast enough, they see the fifty-four, right? And they know that that's where they're going.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here or a relative of the applicant?
The applicant grew older in the last couple hours. The applicant had to leave to go home to put children to bed. And I just said I would stay and represent, it's my daughter-in-law Holly Brandborg and her friend Amanda. And I just want to ask a question. Do all the stores need to have numbers on them? I'm hearing they don't, but we, but fifty-four.
Fire department requires the numbers to be posted on the spaces. And if someone doesn't, doesn't have the numbers, then they're, they're not, they're not in compliance with the fire department. They like to have lit numbers so they can see where they're, like if someone calls and someone's having a heart attack, right?
Right.
They're able to locate.
So it needs to be lit and I think that. Those are meant, those are stone. I mean, it's.
Yeah, but I think they have lights under the overhang that I think are going to meet that requirement, right?
I don't.
Although the one neighbor across the street complained about the lighting, remember?
But not the psychic.
No, no, anyway, that's neither here nor there. If the lighting's required by the fire department to light the, to light the numbers, then I think the neighbor across the street is just going to have to deal with it. But I don't, I don't think we really need to get that into detail.
So anyway, the reason why they want to paint it white is to distinguish it from the other buildings. Cause it's, the yoga building is sort of one dull color and then you get to their space. And it, it, it would help them greatly, they feel with their business. So that's why they're requesting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
I do. I have a question.
Commissioner Fregoso.
Thank you. A, a question and a comment, I think. I, I can understand the rationale of painting the building white. It does kind of give it a slightly cleaner look, but I don't think that would solve the problem of someone being unable to identify what business is where. I think a more effective strategy might be some blade signs in front of each of the buildings that are more easily read as you're walking or driving down the street. You can see a blade sign a block away. And it may or may not preclude them from needing to paint the building, which if they want to paint the building, I think that's fine, but it won't solve the problem because their signage is very lovely, but you have to stand in front of the door and the lighting has to be just right to be able to see their sign on the door. So that would be a, a suggestion I would have.
Yes, I, I think that signage is an issue to them. And I think there is some signage and I know they have to go before design review with any kind of sign change, no?
Um, if they. It depends what it is.
Yeah, if they have a hanging sign, they're allowed to have one sign flat on the building and one hanging sign that can be approved by staff. So if they hung it under that overhang, right, a blade sign, it could be approved by staff.
If, if that's a recommendation, I hope it would be in there to them. Cause I'm not sure I'll remember all that.
You can put it in the letter of action.
I would appreciate. Okay.
I just think it would really give them a more effective solution than just the color of the building.
Right, I just, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up public comment on this agenda item. None in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, I'm going to close public comment on this item and I'm going to bring it back to discussion from the commission. And I think I'll go ahead this time first and, and start as far as the fire department and addressing, there could be, I know for homes, there's certain requirements that we see all the time, four inches lighted, that kind of thing. There may be differences for commercial properties. So it would be interesting to see what, or if they have any requirements for light, for signage or numbering for commercial properties. Then my other comment kind of relates to Commissioner Fregoso's comment that I think one of the things that makes it hard for this business to be seen on the road is in fact the sign, the hanging sign they have, which is a black sign with small white lettering. So it's very hard to see them and what the business name is walking or even driving by. I don't think the sign that's there is effective from that perspective. And one of the questions, you know, I would have asked the applicant was, did they ever consider changing out that sign as something that would potentially bring more visibility to the building? I was by there, walking past there within the last week. And, you know, the sign, the hanging sign itself is very hard to see and you can't read what the business is. And so this business had an A-frame out in the middle of the sidewalk, trying to bring people in and, and notice, you know, what their business was. But that again presents the problem of having an A-frame in the middle of the sidewalk blocking traffic. So, I mean, pedestrian walkways. So I think it would be something even with the white building and the numbering for them to take a look at, you know, whether their sign is, is visible and then perhaps going in for a new sign and, you know, with the sign ordinance. And that was kind of the only comment I had on this as far as the application. Any other comments or discussion on this?
Fresh paint, nice, do it.
Once again, I concur with Commissioner Jensen. It looks great. I think it'll be a, an improvement to the streetscape. I'm in support.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, sure. Uh, right, motion to approve resolution twenty-two three twelve. Approving application twenty-two three fourteen for conditional use permits for, and front. Oh, no, I mean the wrong one. Sorry, completely wrong. That's what you get if you start clicking away. I'll start over again. Motion to approve resolution number twenty-two three dash ten. Approving the design review permit number twenty-three thirteen to paint the building that contains the commercial spaces designated fifty-four and fifty-six Balinas Road with what, uh, road white with black trim.
May I make a friendly amendment to add to the condition number one, a sentence saying that the size of the lettering and any lighting requirements must be acceptable to the other Fairfax agencies?
Yes, I will accept that. Thank you.
I would second the motion as amended.
Fregoso?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye.
Forget anybody.
Pfeffer, you forgot Pfeffer.
EJ Sopper.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's a ten-day appeal process. Information from the town clerk. Thank you. So we're ready for item three, one forty-two Tamil Pious Road, application twenty-three fourteen. Can we have a staff report?
The project consists of the construction of a deck that would be approximately two hundred and thirteen square feet. And it would be on the upper floor of the, an existing house. The project also proposes to rebuild an existing wooden stairway that is entirely within the public pathway adjacent to the northwestern side of the property. And it also proposes to legalize that, the location of that stairway with a revocable encroachment permit. A previous property owner constructed the stairway there in the late nineteen nineties without permits and attempted to legalize it, but never followed through with the information necessary to move that project forward to the planning commission. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit because it proposes physical improvements to a property that does not meet the minimum size requirements of the code. And a small corner of the deck would project approximately two and a half feet into the required six-foot front yard setback. Town code does allow decks to project up to two feet into required setback. So the project requires a variance to allow the deck to project the additional six inches into the required setback. Another portion of the deck would project approximately eight feet into the combined side yard setback, requiring approval of a combined side yard setback variance. The reconstruction of this stairway within the public pathway requires planning commission approval of a revocable encroachment permit. And the findings required to approve the conditional use permit and variances can be made and they are contained with, in resolution number twenty-two three dash twelve. So the town code gives the planning commission the authority to grant revocable encroachment permits for private structures within portions and public easements that are not being used by the public for, you know, pedestrian traffic or like this pathway has. The stairway projects approximately four feet from the side of the property into the public pathway. And that leaves approximately four and a half feet of pathway for the public to use on the other side. So it's just in that one portion that, where the stairs are, that it encroaches. The planning commission, if the planning commission grants the encroachment permit to allow the stairway to remain in the public pathway, it would be formalizing the use of the stairway that has existed for over twenty years. And the formalizing the encroachment would, would be subject to the owner signing and notarizing and recording a revocable encroachment document prior to the issuance of the building permit to construct the stairway, to reconstruct the stairway and build the proposed deck. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't get any comments or conditions on the project from outside agencies. And the staff report incorrectly states that the resolution has standard conditions of approval from Ross Valley Fire Department, Marin Municipal Water District and Ross Valley Sanitary District. And they can be viewed entirely in that document, but they're not in that document. So the resolution does not contain those conditions of approval from those agencies because we, I didn't get any from them. So, and there's also a bit of an error on the plans on page, pages A-one and A-two. And it shows a fence that is incorrectly drawn. So that, that's on the, you look at page, oh, sorry, I got the wrong. Hang on, it's here. Sorry about that. So there, it's, the fence is on the, so if you're, if you're looking at the parcel, if you look at the, the western side, you see there's like a two hundred and ninety-two square foot deck on the side of the house. Then there's a bedroom two, kind of to the south of that. And then you can kind of see the fence goes under the deck. And then it skirts around the house and goes around bedroom two. And then it kind of goes into the public pathway. And that's actually an error that was not able to get corrected on the plans prior to the meeting date. So if, you know, there's a proposed, we could amend the resolution somehow just stating that, you know, that part of the, the deck should, or sorry, that part of the fence should not be shown in that location. So, so that's kind of one error there. And then it also shows up on page A-three as well. So that, that concludes the staff reports. And the recommendation is to approve the project as proposed by adopting the resolution. That's it.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jansen?
Yeah, I have a few. So the, if I read the plans correctly, so bedroom two, the deck, the posts underneath it, the cross bracing, basically entire side of that house and structure are over the property line into the public right of way by approximately four feet.
Correct. And the, this, that actually went before the planning commission several years ago in nineteen ninety-four.
Right.
Yeah, and it was approved.
Right.
For that, yeah.
Yes, okay. The, so that right of way, it's like a path, there is like a stone or, or cement stair that goes up, steps that come up from Tamil Pious. And then it goes up the hill. Does that, does that trail continue?
Um, sort of. I mean, it, it, it kind of turns around behind the property and goes over to mid. I don't know if you consider that continuing it. So if you, if you go behind the house, if you go up the, the trail.
Yeah.
You still live there.
Okay.
So it does, it continues up the hill and another trail that's a mid-block trail actually wraps around the south.
Right, right. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I had on a similar note. So it looked to me like the only way to get to that public path from the bottom of the street by the garage is the stone stairway. Who is responsible for maintaining that portion of, like, is there any way to get to the public pathway from the bottom without? pathway from the bottom without going on those?
I can only tell you what I overheard, and that is that Garrett Toy. Garrett Toy was the town manager here when the town got volunteers, and I think maybe the CCC also helped, you might know, to put those stairs in and to finish it up to scenic, right? And there was some kind of an agreement between the owner that, that they would allow the public to continue to use those privately constructed stairs. So I walk on them all the time. Because you can get over to Midway, you can get to Tamil Pious, you can get up to scenic. And I don't know, you know, Garrett was the type of person that I think would have done some kind of an agreement, but I haven't been able to find anything. But we've had new managers come in, people throw stuff away, and it's just, anyway.
Commission.
Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, on the same lines, is it possible to include a condition as part of the permit that, you know, requires that the stairs be maintained for the public to access? And, and I guess one of the, the things from my perspective, and I had spent some time when I was on the open space committee and working with the volunteers on clearing the trails. The, the town has a website. If you search on the town webpage for the public trails, there's a whole bunch of maps. And one of them is all Fairfax roots map. And, and what it has is different colors to show whether or not each specific trail is accessible or needs maintenance, or is completely inaccessible. Green, yellow, and red, I think. And that is an ongoing, long-term project by the volunteers to try to ensure that the inner lace trail system within the town is opened up as much as possible for public access. So, you know, I mean, I just am curious about how far we can go in the resolution to encourage not only the part of the, the western edge of the property that is green on that map, which I think must be the stairs. And then the part that is yellow, which is above the stairs, I think along the southern edge of the parcel. You know, I, I would want to ensure that, you know, public access is, is preserved along that. And, you know, I don't know if our, if our resolution can kind of further that interest.
Hi.
Commissioner Newton, are you talking about the stone stairs at the bottom? On Tamil Pious, or that are in public right of way? That is the way for the applicant to get into the house?
Well, it looks to me like that is the public trail. I was just, I just thought we were talking about the folks that built those stairs, right?
So the only access to this house is off of the public way. It is a public way. I know the history of this house very well. The stairs that used to be there before the stone stairs, where it was a wooden staircase that was ripped off by a moving truck going down that little narrow road. And so there was no public access to that public way because there, the stairs were just drug down the road by a moving truck. The owner of the house at that time took it upon themselves to rebuild those stairs at great expense to them with a handshake agreement with the town to replace it in kind so that the public could still have access, and they could have access to their house. Just wanted to give you that history.
Yeah, just and knowing that the, you know, that, that element to the history and to Commissioner Newton's thought and suggestion on what to include maybe in a resolution. What I was thinking was just a condition not to otherwise block public access to the remainder of the trail and just sort of be silent as to this, to the stone steps, because really the concern is the public access and, and the only action here being refurbishing a different part of the stair. Right, yeah, you know.
Any other questions for staff?
I just want to add on there that I, I do know from personal experience of still walking up and down that hill that it, it is used by the public quite often. It's a, it's the quickest way to get up to scenic from the, the manor neighborhood, and it's used daily by the public.
Another question for staff, the revocable encroachment permit. And should we get there? You brought us some corrections for the resolution. But the resolution didn't include any information about the revocable encroachment permit getting, thank you, recorded and a copy brought, a copy provided to town staff. There, the, the reso doesn't address the revocable encroachment permit at all. So when we get there. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Good evening.
And can you just give us your name?
Yep, my name is John Nolan. I'm the current applicant and also homeowner.
Is there anything you wanted to mention about this application?
I would just say, you know, we're trying to build a small deck on the front of the house. In doing that, we're trying to do the right thing and bring the house up to code with all the things that have been built by previous owners. So doing that in good faith. And then as far as the pathway goes, happy to keep it open to the public. We see our neighbors there every day. We use it. We use the other pathways, so that's not an issue at all.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
I have one question for you, just so I understand it. There is, if you follow up the stone path up the hill and you continue, then on the, what would be your left side, there appears to be a very small stair, an additional small stair. I can see it in the elevations. Where is that going? Is that dead end under the deck?
So when you get up to the top of the stone steps, there's a platform, if you turn left, that goes into our front yard. If you continue up that open path, there's a second gate to our backyard. And there's like a small set of steps that run almost underneath that bedroom.
Yeah, underneath the bathroom, behind, behind the cross bracing.
Yes, and then there are, that goes up the hill, and then there are sort of like two steps up into the backyard.
Okay, thank you.
I think in the elevation, you're seeing a stair that's actually behind the fence. It's just drawn in a peculiar way.
Any other questions for the applicant? See you then. Thank you. We have any public comment on Zoom?
No.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll share my thoughts. I think starting with the deck, the deck sits, you know, there's a deck on, on top of the garage, which is much closer to the public right of way. The location of this deck is not really that visual, visible from Tamil Pious itself. And the corner that clips the prop, or the setback line is, that's really a tiny, small corner. It's the result that the property line basically have a 45 cut off at the corner. So I do not consider that a problem by itself. That would be kind of silly to pull the deck back just for that tiny corner. On the other side of the deck, the combined setback is exceeded as well, but that's not so much the deck that's doing it. That's the house itself that's doing it. And so again, same logic. If you were to try to make the deck comply with the combined setback, you don't get a useful result. It does not increase, it does not improve your, the visibility between the buildings. It would look odd. So regarding the deck, I think it's a logical way how it is attached to the house, and it, it, it would look good. The, getting that little wooden stair up higher up the tail approved. If it would be by itself, that would be a concern. But again, same story. It's the house that is completely built over the property line, and all that is already approved. So again, that stair makes perfect sense the way it sits within that context. Having said all that, I think keeping that public trail open is very important. I would, in some form, mention that in this resolution, just to make sure that it's recorded and, and that we keep those accessible to the public. But other than that, I would approve the, the application.
Any other discussion? Okay, I, let me just ask a question of, of staff. The concrete steps going up, were those ever covered by encroachment permit in the past? So are we only doing a revocable encroachment permit for the wooden stairs? And how would we address, if we would at all, the
stone stairs? Here's where I have a little bit of lack of information. These, the, the concrete stairs were placed previously existing stairs that predated probably the incorporation of town, because this house was built, when was this house built? 10 or something, 19, 1914, right? And so I don't, I, I don't know what occurred between the town manager, but it's like replacement of a, of a stairway that existed probably before the revocable encroachment ordinance even existed, right? I mean, to be, to be careful, you could add it to the revocable encroachment document. I mean, it's, it kind of goes without saying, they're not on their property, and if the town really needs it, you know, they would have to relocate their stairs, you know what I mean? Because it's a public easement.
I would almost think it's, it's a public stair. It's on the public right of way. It's owned by the town.
But it wasn't paid for, built by the, that's a legal question, you know what I mean? And I don't know that you actually have to deal with it tonight. I don't.
No, I, I was just curious, since we were going to the, you know, we were doing the revocable encroachment permits for everything else there that was in the public right of way, but that's fine.
You know, it's like the property owner stepped in because there was an accident and restored a stairway for the public and to provide access to their house, you know what I mean? And it was an emergency situation. It wasn't something where you could.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just asking.
Yeah.
So assuming we're at the point of looking at a resolution, did you want to go over the corrections you gave us today?
Sure. So the first page of the resolution, the first, the first paragraph, well, not below the title. Very first word is misspelled, so whereas is missing a second E, so that needs to be added. And let's see, and then the next, there was, the, the property is within a quarter mile of a, of a spotted owl nesting site. And that was mentioned in the staff report, but the, the resolution didn't include a condition about the northern spotted owl, so that, that's been added to the resolution. So that's added, like, at the end of the, the conditions as condition 12. Do you want me to read the, the condition? Or?
No, I mean, if everybody has a copy of it, it's a standard, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so it, the condition prohibits construction during the northern spotted owl nesting season. And that's from February 1st through July 31st. Unless a plan for allowing construction activities during this period is submitted by a qualified spotted owl biologist and approved by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. So with documentation of the approval provided to the town prior to initiation of any construction activity. So, so basically, you just have to make sure that, you know, you either do the construction outside of the timeframe when the owls could be nesting, or you get documentation to bring to the town showing that there is actually not a, an, an nesting, an owl with a, a nest in that location near you. That makes sense.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. The motion to approve, I'm double checking my number, I need to make sure I got the right one. Motion to approve resolution 2023-12, approving application 2314 for conditional use permit and front yard and combined side yard setback variances for a 213 square foot deck addition at 142 Tamil Pious Road, and a revocable encroachment permit for a stairway encroachment into the public pathway trail adjacent to 142 Tamil Pious Road. With the correction of the first whereas, as mentioned, and the addition condition number 12 regarding the added, the spotted owl. And we were going to add something regarding the accessibility of the public right of way to be maintained. I have not found a spot for that yet, but that would be probably condition 13. So we would add a condition that the existing public, the existing access to the public right of way along the west side of the property must be maintained.
I'll second that.
I have a friendly amendment. You were too fast, Commissioner Newton. We also need to address the revocable encroachment permit and having a copy of that provided to the town, our standard paragraph, because the resolution doesn't address the revocable encroachment permit at all, so we would need to add that as another condition.
Could you explain that to me?
I will.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a standard document called revocable encroachment document, right? And there's standard language in it. And it's, and it's, and what we do is we require them to record it at the county of Marin so that subsequent owners will be notified to the fact that they have to meet these conditions and that it's a revoke. So we'll alert the, right? And then we ask them to bring a copy of the recorded document back to the town so that the Public Works Department can keep it on, you know, in their files.
Okay, understood. Yeah, no, I accept that. That will be condition fourteen then to comply with revocable permit conditions.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Shall I call? Oh, what, shall I call the roll?
And the second was Commissioner Newton, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Ready? Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pepper?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Fragoso?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi.
Motion carries. There is a ten-day appeal process with information from the town clerk. Thank you. So if we can have, our next item is seventy-four Woodland Road, application twenty-three fifteen. Can we have a staff report, please?
So this project proposes to restore and repair existing retaining walls, construct new retaining walls and access stairways, improve the existing driveway and construct a new deck off the back of the house that would provide two parking spaces below. The project is down slope from Woodland Road and is developed with the house and two large retaining walls that are along the northern property frontage and wrap around into the western portion of the property. The retaining walls support the hillside on the property and form both sides of the driveway. And they also kind of support Woodland Road. One retaining wall is mostly constructed in the Woodland Road right of way. And the town granted an encroachment permit for that in nineteen sixty-five. The other wall is more interior to the site with a portion that projects into the front yard setback and then goes past that and encroaches within the Woodland Road right of way. And that wall is crumbling and cracking in parts. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit because of the physical improvements, the new deck to a property that does not meet the minimum size requirements of the code. A portion of the more interior retaining wall would reach up to seven feet in height within the front yard setback and within the Woodland Road right of way. So that requires a retaining wall height variance and a revoked, a revocable encroachment permit. And the findings required to approve the conditional use permit and retaining wall height variance can be made and are contained within the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. A portion of the driveway and a stairway would be within the Woodland Road right of way, requiring planning commission approval of a revocable encroachment permit for those, those features. The proposed paving of the driveway, the reinforcement of the existing more interior retaining wall and the, and the stairway within the Woodland Road right of way would, would not increase any encroachment. There's already a stairway that kind of partially encroaches within the Woodland Road right of way. And the proposed stairway is just kind of moved down a little bit along the, along the wall, the retaining wall. The proposed driveway area and retaining wall would remain in the same location. They'd be down slope from Woodland Road. And like I mentioned, the stairway would just be located a little, it'd be located a little further east along the retaining wall, but would remain on the interior side of the wall down slope from Woodland Road. There's an approximately eleven to twelve foot width for Woodland Road in front of the property adjacent to the driveway and the retaining walls. And it's been like that since about nineteen sixty-five. So allowing the driveway and retaining walls and stairway to remain would not really have a significant change over what's existing. And if the planning commission grants the encroachment permit, you know, this, this use has been like this for over fifteen years. So it'd just be formalizing the use that's been there. And then the property owner would be required to record and sign, notarize and record a revoked, revocable encroachment document prior to the issuance of the building permit to build the deck. And so, and then similar to the other staff report, this staff report also incorrectly stated that there were conditions from the fire department, the water district and the sanitary district that were included in the resolution. They were not. The only comments that I received from an agency was from the water district. So those, those conditions can be added to the resolution. So staff recommends that the commission move to approve the application number twenty-three dash fifteen by adopting resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. That sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jansen?
There is a sewer listation shown on the plans, on the new plans, but it's listed as existing. So that is not part of this permitting. It's shown on the new plans, not on the old, but it is called out, everything, every component is called out as existing.
For which page?
A one oh one, G two boxes, and then you have sewer pump and it pumps it up the hill.
Yeah, so that, those are, that's an existing feature. So that was just called out by the town engineer, the consulting engineer just requested that that information be shown on the.
That is just shown, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have a question related to the deck. So the deck's going to be attached to the house and will the deck be accessible from inside the house? I noticed that there's, it looks like a sliding glass door. So they will be coming out and using that. But there's no exterior lighting identified for that right now?
Correct.
Okay. And we can address that when we get to the reso. So, all right.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Is? So if we'd like to answer, if you can, can you hear us?
Yes.
Want to state your name and then if you want to provide any comments you have on your application, that'd be great.
My name is, I'm owner and applicant. The question about the.
Did we lose you? We can't hear.
He's still connected.
Sorry, can you?
Yeah, there he goes.
Can you try saying something again, applicant? We can't hear you and you were, you were cutting in and out when you were speaking before. He's probably at home and does. Oh, boy. If you can hear us, can you try turning off your video? We don't, that might improve your, us, our ability to hear you. You can still hear us. He signed back in. So can you elevate? Oh, there you are.
Hello, sorry, it crashed just at an inopportune moment. I'm not sure what you got when I was last speaking, but I was trying to answer the question regarding the deck. So there is already access to the deck through double doors. And there is also lighting on the outside because there was an existing deck when we purchased the property, but it was crumbling and it, it was literally removed by hand. And so the first thing we did, it was unsafe. It couldn't even be walked on. So the first thing we did is remove that deck. And then we've had those doors just basically locked shut for two years. And the deck that we're trying to build is replacing that previous deck and it is smaller in size. So it exists inside the footprint of the previous deck, but is actually substantially smaller.
All right, thank you on that. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And or a motion?
Well, I guess I'm in motion land here, so tonight. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, approving a conditional use permit for the construction of a three hundred and seventy-three square foot deck and a retaining wall height variance and revocable encroachment permit for the alteration slash repair of an existing, of existing retaining walls and construction of a, of new retaining walls, stairs and driveway for the property at seventy-four Woodland Road.
And I have a friendly amendment to that, which would be to add the same language for the revocable encroachment permit that we discussed in the prior reso. And that could be you could, could be after your MMWD.
Accepted.
I'll second it.
And before, another amendment would be to include the changes that Planner Spencer had identified with respect to the comments that you got from one agency and that's already in there.
Accepted.
We have a vote.
Okay. Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pepper?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Fragoso?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Motion carries. There is a ten-day appeal process. Information can be obtained from the town clerk. Thank you. So there's going on, there's no discussion items. We're going to go to minutes. So that's the minutes of the April twentieth meeting, if anyone has corrections or changes. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. On page four, in the paragraph after the reference to the Comcast presentation, the last sentence says, Commissioner Newton asked if the bollards on Willow could be relocated. Mr. Bittari stated yes. I think it should be changed to say, asked if the bollards could be installed at the Willow location. And then on page six, under the second motion that we made, item number five, talks about the inclusion of the normal language prohibiting construction during the spotted own nesting season with respect to four forty-five Willow. And that should be a reference to the spotted owl nesting season with respect to the paracabinets by four forty-five Cascade Drive. That's it.
Go ahead.
Yep, just to switch at the roll for Philip Pepper or PJ.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
In the roll from Peter to Philip or PJ.
Okay, so I submitted some clerical spelling corrections to staff. One, before the meeting, one of them though was addressing on the, who was present at the beginning of the meeting where we had Commissioner Jansen. So we should change that to when he arrived at the meeting. And then I had two. Outside of that, I had two comments. One was page four, when Commissioner Jansen asked a question, I think at, and that was, and I don't have my minutes in front of me, but that was related to, I think changing the, I'm going to have to pull them out. I wanted, on his section, I wanted to add a second sentence, which the applicant had said that it may also result in the need to increase the cabinets in size to accept the power unit. So I think the question was.
Yeah.
Right? Because I think these kind of are a little bit clarifying since it's such a technical area. The second one was.
So you want that second sentence, Mr. Glisten, to be to Mr. Glisten saying that relocating that would result in an increase in the size. I got it.
And then page five, top of the page, change. He would guess they are maxed out. And this was discussing the.
Yep, whether it could.
The size, right? I mean, the length to, he would guess that they are just about maxed out. And those were the only corrections I had. Any other corrections? So do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
I'd second.
I'm going to call the roll. Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pepper?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Fragoso?
Abstain.
Oh, thank you. Chair Swift?
Hi, thank you. Now we're on to commissioners' comments or requests. Do we have any comments or requests from the commission? Okay, seeing none. There's no planning director's report. So motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Can I second? Just say aye, everybody.
Aye.
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 Aye. I am aye.